Take your seats. Members of council, I'm going to call the committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, June 12th to order. But before I do a roll call, we had two of our employees have passed away. Brenda Watt was a part-time PSW and she passed away on Friday, June 7th. Brianna worked at Lakeview Manor since 2016. She was 37 years old and a new mom of 24 months. And Lakeview Manor has lowered their flags to half-mast. We also had Walter Zoot, Durham Regional Transit employee, pass away on June 4th. Walter joined Oshawa Handy Transit as a dispatcher on March 25th, 2002, and went to transition to Durham Region Transit on January 1st, 2006. Walter has remained in his role as a dispatcher with specialized services. Walter was a special person with a disability who overcame daily challenges and used DRT specialized service to get to work. Since the start of the pandemic, DRT has supported Walter to work remotely from his home. Members of council, if you would, could you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Also, before I call roll call, members of council, this is the 35th anniversary of Wind Reach Farm, and the RCMP musical ride and Super Dogs are at Wind Reach Farm today and tomorrow. If you have the opportunity, you can go online and get tickets. Madam Clerk, would you call, do a roll call, please?
Okay, roll call's starting now.
Okay, we have quorum. Declarations of cunary interests. I see no hands in the room, Madam Clerk, online? No, we have none. We have a number of presentations today. The first presentation, I will have our CIO Elaine Baxter-Treher introduce, please.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Today, Committee of the whole members will hear a comprehensive overview of the Toronto Community Crisis Service. As you may recall, Durham conducted an exploration of a mental health crisis response program in collaboration with the region's health and social services departments, along with Durham Regional Police Services, the board. This work was led by a consultant from the International Crisis Response Association who presented to the committee in February of this year. Following the February presentation, it was determined that hearing from a current best practice in mental health crisis response to community citizens would be important in order to understand the complexities of program delivery, and the committee did specifically ask us to explore the possibility of Toronto coming to present to us today. The presentation today will provide the information needed to determine our next steps in Durham for a possible pilot of mental health crisis response. This type of program would not be a duplication of current services that support our homelessness community, but rather a 24/7 crisis response to community members who reported in the community engagement phase that there is a need for this type of response to complement the current mental health support system in Durham. I am now very pleased to introduce our colleagues from the city of Toronto, Denise Andrea Campbell, who's the Executive Director of Social Development, Finance and Administration, Mohamed Sharia, Director of Community Safety and Well-Being, and Nicole Watson, Manager of Policy Reform. So Denise, I'll turn it over to you and your team. Thank you very much for joining us today.
Good morning, and thank you very much for this opportunity to share with you our journey in Toronto of developing and implementing what is now officially Toronto's fourth emergency service, the Toronto Community Crisis Service. We're going to do something slightly different than perhaps what you're used to, in that myself and my two colleagues, who have, we've all been there since the beginning of the journey, so we will take turns presenting an overview to you. I think we're ready for the slides to come up? Perfect. If you can go to the next slide, that would be great. Thank you very much. So, before we dive into our history and the details of our service model, let's start with a little bit about the impact of this work. Before you is a quote from one of our service users from our first year of operations. Our work is to create a non-police-led alternative response model for Torontonians in crisis. This model is client-centered, trauma-informed, anchored in the principle of do no harm. And as you can see in front of you, from our client, our service users, they are finding it tremendously impactful. This user talks about not knowing what they would have done without the intervention of the Toronto Community Crisis Service. Next slide, please. So I'd like to quickly ground us in where we started. In June 2020, in response to the global movement for racial justice after the murder of George Floyd, Toronto City Council adopted 36 recommendations to improving policing in our city and to provide access to effective supports for vulnerable Torontonians. One of the key council directions was to create a non-police-led alternative response model for Torontonians in crisis. This was built on recommendations from the Toronto Action Plan to confront anti-black racism that council adopted unanimously just two years prior. And this is also a priority action under SAVTO, Toronto's Community Safety and Well-Being Plan, as I know that you've been doing work here in Durham to implement your own community safety and well-being plan. In starting the development of this work, Social Development Division, the one that I lead, we were charged to develop this model. We did that acknowledging that years of under-investment in upstream health and community supports had left the Toronto Police Service to become default first responders to mental health situations. In Toronto, there we saw an increase of 42% in mental health and substance use calls to Toronto Police over a decade. And as we know, addressing a health situation using an enforcement lens did not, created service barriers and created negative outcomes particularly for Indigenous Black and equity-deserving communities. So in this process, we were charged to develop an alternative model. In February 2021, after deep engagement and reviewing 53 models across 50 jurisdictions, City Council unanimously approved a pilot, and that we'll talk to you about that, that became the Toronto Community Service. In spring of 2022, we launched in those four pilot areas, and then in November 2023, with the strength of third-party evaluation, council approved our ability to go citywide.
Thank you very much, Denise. Next slide, please. So what is the Toronto Community Crisis Service and what is involved in its delivery? So the Toronto Community Crisis Service offers a no-wrong-door approach that leverages multiple intake channels. It's available 24/7. It is a voluntary consent-based service that serves clients 16-plus, with also a kinship model of care for families. The care from the mobile crisis teams is trauma-informed, and a harm reduction approach is taken in servicing clients. The service also offers post-crisis follow-up case management and service navigation, always from a culturally relevant perspective, and connects service users to a network of clients, sorry, a network of organizations to support them in their journey. If I could get the next slide. In terms of the various components of the service, you'll see them outlined here, but the city of Toronto's role is really as service system manager. We fund the service. We also lead intergovernmental advocacy around its development, and other strategic lenses to its ongoing implementation such as public education campaigns. The service itself is community-led by our anchor organizations. These are local health service providers in Toronto that are funded to hire and manage the mobile crisis teams, and also provide the wraparound support networks that are part of the case management care. These partners are the Canadian Mental Health Association Toronto branch, Tybuk Community Health Centre, Gerstein Crisis Centre, and Two-Spirited People of the First Nations. We also have our access and intake partner. This is Find Help 211. They are the partner who receives and dispatch calls to the appropriate teams. The crisis teams themselves are made up of multidisciplinary, community-based crisis response workers. The teams are supplemented by additional team members that are located within these anchor agencies, that may include case managers, nurses, peer outreach workers, and this enables really a fulsome response to crisis calls that come in. The teams are deployed in a minimum of two crisis workers at a time to ensure mutual safety, and the teams themselves receive extensive training. Over 200 hours of training are received by all the crisis workers who enter the field, with ongoing opportunities for professional development through our community of practice. The training topics are very vast and include things like crisis intervention, privacy and documentation, suicide intervention training, situational safety, as well as a number of population-specific trainings to ensure that service to Black, Indigenous, 2S LGBTQ communities is responsive to their needs. There's also a component of scenario-based training to allow them to experience what it will be like as they enter the field. In terms of governance, we have a number of local community advisory tables, four total, that take place within the community-led organizations. We also have a citywide table that offers guidance and support. Evaluation has been very key to the Toronto Community Crisis Service implementation and to be able to report out on results. As Denise mentioned, we've had a third-party evaluator in the Centre for Addiction and Mental Health, specifically their Provincial Systems Support Program in Shigabe Makua, who have provided both the results for our six-month and one-year evaluation, and who are engaged, again, currently doing our year-two evaluation, which is focused on service user outcomes. If I could have the next slide? Thank you. So this slide gives a high-level service map in terms of what the process looks like when a call is received. So there is the point of crisis on the far-left side. The call comes in through one of our intake channels. This tends to be either through 211 or 911. As noted in our first year evaluation, initially, the majority of calls were coming through the 911 pathway. However, over time, the 211 pathway has steadily increased in terms of the receiver, of main source of calls being received, and it is now our primary call source. Once a call is received, it is assessed and triaged for mobile response. We have a memorandum of understanding with Toronto Police Service, which outlines the call types and criteria for diversion. The calls need to have a mental health component, they must be nonviolent, and there must be no immediate risk of harm. There are six call categories that are determined by the Toronto Police Service that are eligible for diversion. Those are calls that fall under thoughts of suicide, person in crisis, well-being checks, distressing or distressing behavior, dispute and advise. Once the mobile teams are dispatched, they will arrive on scene and provide support. This may look like de-escalation of the crisis situation, and also addressing the social determinants of health for the individual in terms of providing food, clothing, water, resources that might be required, harm reduction, supplies, et cetera. One of the really important pieces of the service is the follow-up supports that are offered. So within 48 hours, there is a second reach-out from the teams to the service user to see how they're doing and assess if there's any additional support required. All service users are also offered to be connected to up to 90 days of post-crisis case management follow-up supports, and we do see this happening in a lot of circumstances, which my colleague will speak to shortly. We know that this, sort of this pathway is just a high-level piece. We don't have necessarily, we do not give response times for the mobile teams to arrive on scene, but on average, it takes about 25 minutes for the teams to respond.
Next slide, please. So in November 2023, as I noted, Toronto City Council declared the Toronto Community Crisis Service as the fourth municipal emergency service. It joins Toronto Fire Services, Toronto Police Service, and Toronto Paramedics as the fourth service that is well-funded, consistent, and will provide a quality response to Torontonians in their time of need. I have to stress that this was an important milestone, because while there was a lot of community advocacy and interest and support for this model, once council declared that we would do this work, there was also lots of apprehension that this is a project, it's temporary, and would disappear just as it was getting to full scale. It is an institution that we are building, a community-based, alternative institution, but it is an institution nonetheless. Next slide, please. Accordingly, Toronto City Council approved the expansion of the Toronto Community Crisis Service from 69% during our pilot phase to full citywide 100% this fall. Our original anchor partners, those that we have built the Toronto Community Crisis Service with, over the past two years, all stepped forward to support us in the expansion to citywide. There is deep commitment, knowledge, and expertise among our partners. So we have been busy supporting our partners to hire and train nearly 100 staff to support the expansion citywide.
Thank you. In terms of the outcomes for this service, just to highlight a few key outcomes, I believe this was shared ahead of time, but the service has responded to almost close to 7,000 calls within the first year of the pilot. Right now, we're on track to hit 13,000 calls responded to. Not all calls require dispatch. Some of the calls can be handled on the phone, and support can be provided, and referrals can be provided over the phone. That's why our partnership with 211 is critical to this piece. My colleague Nicole has already shared that we are receiving more calls now through the 211 door than we are through the 911 door. So this first-year evaluation showed that 55% of our calls came in through 911, and 46% came in through 211, but that number has now become inverse. And it's important to note that we are also receiving calls through the new 988 Suicide Prevention number set up by the federal government, as well as through the distress centers of Toronto. A few key other highlights to note is that of the calls we received from 911, we were successfully able to handle 78% of those calls without any police involvement. And we also track how many calls resulted in emergency hospital visit, and only about 8% of those calls required emergency hospital visit. The teams were able to transport any individuals who wished to voluntarily go with them to the hospital. And the last data point here is around how many calls the teams requested police or paramedics attendance and/or fire, and that is 4% of calls the teams requested attendance either to gain entry to an address, or if an individual required a mental health apprehension, or if there were concerns about safety. Next slide, please. But I think the most important part of the service beyond successfully diverting from emergency services attendance is supporting people in times of care. The teams were able to connect close to 2,500 referrals for individuals. When we say referrals, that can mean things like housing, legal supports, counseling supports, and food supports. Close to 1,160 individuals agreed to our standard 48-hour follow-up, and 56% of the individuals we've supported through our 90-day case management supports. What do those supports look like specifically for various diverse cultural communities? We were able to provide almost 300 different cultural supports. That may mean a referral to a group such as Hung Fook, which is one of our service providers that we were able to do referrals to, which does specific East Asian community mental health supports. We were also able to provide almost 50% of our Indigenous, the clients we've served, were able to get access to Indigenous specifics supports such as ceremony, traditional medicine, family and kinship care. And some of the clients, we were also able to support 20%, were able to access Afrocentric and West Indian and Caribbean supports. This information is included more extensively in the CAMH evaluation report, the Centre for Addiction and Mental Health, which provided a robust 130-page evaluation of the first year of the pilot. If I could have the next slide, please. The other thing that CAMH was able to do was actually specifically speak to service users and ask them if they were better off, and ask them about their experiences about the service. And resoundingly, the feedback from service users was that the service has improved their lives. 95% of service users reported being very satisfied or satisfied with the service they received from the team. Over 90% of service users indicated they were very positively or positively impacted their perception of community safety and well-being, and 95% of service users indicate they agree or strongly agree that they decided what supports they wanted and felt emotionally safe receiving those supports. We intend to continue our evaluation of the program going into year two, and continue the service user engagement to see what their feedback and perspectives are. If I could have the last slide. Just wanted to round out that some more stories of impact that we've heard from individuals, that's also in the package submitted to you. I'll just quickly read one of the stories. One individual shared that the TCCS helped me understand that I'm worthy, and they wanted me to go forward. They uplifted me and made me feel like I'm worthy. And another one is at the bottom. The TCCS talked to me, and they talked to my son, and they talked to us all, and I'm still used to people saying we're going to do X, Y, or Z, and then nothing really happens. But my, oh gosh, they went above and beyond. Thank you so much, and we're pleased to take any questions you may have.
So thank you very much for the presentation. We do have some questions. First is Counselor Crawford.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you very much for your presentation. I am just wondering about the training aspect of the dispatchers. So from a, whether it's a 211 or a 911, kind of how they take a call and how it's dispatched is critical. They would be making the determine whether or not it would go to you or to the police, I'm assuming. And so how was that handled? And who did the training?
Through the chair, I can answer that. So in terms of the 211 call-takers, they do receive robust training. So they take part, first off, in the same curriculum as the crisis workers, so they have access to all of sort of the types of supports and how to support particular communities. They also do training on TCCS guiding principles, mental health first aid, assist, and trauma-informed call-taking. Through 211, they are provided with ongoing and consistent training opportunities for upskilling their skills around receiving mental health calls to ensure that they are reliable and that there is a standard to the approach when a call is received. On the 911 comms side, Toronto Police Service does train all of its 911 comms call-takers on TCCS. All of the new curriculum now includes it for new hires as onboarding. TCCS also works with Toronto Police Service to visit the communications center to present around the service, both from the city of Toronto perspective, and also the anchor partners that we work with. Those organizations are able to visit the 911's comm center as well, to speak to staff, and socialize the service to the call-takers.
So do police help with the training of 211, or are they not part of that?
In terms of the training for 211, the police, there is a session on the Toronto Police Service with the 211 call-takers take part in, but they're not necessarily engaged in each of the training sessions.
Okay. So being considered an emergency service, which is huge, obviously, are you dispatched when a call comes through, let's say, 911, I guess, because that would be the only time all three services would be dispatched? Are you also dispatched at the same time?
If a call comes through 911, they do assess the call for diversion to TCCS, assuming the caller agrees to being, to the diversion, then the call will be transferred to 211 for a TCCS response. There are incidents where there is co-response on the scene, and some of that is outlined in the one-year evaluation report. And we, when teams do arrive together, they work collaboratively to address the situation.
So help me understand, then, just asking, not criticizing at all, just, I'm trying to understand, like, it sounds like a great thing to be considered an emergency services. How does that benefit you?
Thanks, Nicole. It's a great question. The major benefit is about building trust and confidence. Part of the work-
With who?
With Torontonians-
Okay.
-who have felt that the existing service offering did not meet their needs or meet their needs adequately. So in some ways, I would say that it's symbolic to ensure that Torontonians know that this is a long-term investment, that the city takes it as seriously as it does the other three emergency services. But it's a very different model. So it's a community-based model where the city is the backbone. We set standards working collaboratively. We are the funder of the service. There are obvious things that city council would like to achieve through the service. And so the designation is to ensure that Torontonians know that this is something that is long-term, deeply invested in, quality, and supported by the full city of Toronto government.
So you mentioned funding. So you said, so the funding portion of your, of this department?
Service.
Service, service. Sorry, sorry. That's all fully funded through the council, is that correct?
That's right. So in 2024, our operating budget is $26 million currently, and as we continue to scale, that will increase accordingly. So through my, right now, the Toronto Community Crisis Service is shepherded through the division that I lead, Social Development. So there is a line item within our budget for that 26 million to come in. And we then work with our partners through agreements to channel the appropriate resources to each anchor partner, and then for the infrastructure at the city to support this work.
Okay. I think that's all my questions. Thank you. It sounds like a great program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Carter.
First of all, good morning, Mr. Chair. So I just want to get some clarification. You have outreach workers? Is that, is that how the program works?
They, we, the program has four community anchor partners, and through them, there are mobile crisis workers, yes.
So the calls come in, they're evaluated, they're, that information is sent to an agency, that agency then sends someone to the individual that's in crisis? Who pays the agency?
We do, city of Toronto.
And that's part of the $26 million?
That is correct.
What was the, what was the original investment in regards to starting this program?
$1.7 million was council's first commitment.
So $1.7 million, just to set the program up, and then $26 million is your operating cost per year?
Currently, yes.
You handle 13,000 calls, if I heard. That's 35 calls a day. Is that correct?
Roughly, although we would all agree, including our partners at Toronto Police Service, that we are not at full capacity. In 2026, a third year of operation, our projections are about 46,000 calls.
So the, the, the agency workers that go out to work, I'm just asking this, the agency workers, their qualifications are? What are their qualifications? And I'm going to ask also about their compensation, if you don't mind, per hour?
Sure, of course.
Because the agencies pay different than governments. I'd like to hear that.
Yeah. So in terms of the first question, their qualifications, they are multidisciplinary teams, so some of them are community nurses, others are peers, people who live experience, but they all receive the same training. Some also have Masters of Social Work, so we have no specific requirement beyond minimum of five years' experience, and the requirement to go through the requisite training, which includes suicide prevention, includes core fundamentals like privacy legislation, and also includes life, you know, safety issues as well, as well as harm reduction approaches in terms of their training. To your second question, the average salary of our crisis worker is about $78,000 across all four pilots.
And that's the agencies that pay that, not you guys?
We flow through those dollars to them.
So do you have a requirement in regards to what your, what your pay scale is and what the bandwidth is to work with those agencies to make sure that the individuals are compensated accordingly?
Yeah, so we did a robust request for proposals, where all these agencies submitted their proposals, and we evaluated their proposals with an, with an external review committee and reviewed the budgets and approved the budgets accordingly.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, it sounds that the, the calls that you're taking and the people that you're serving are housed individuals. You're, are you dealing, what percentage of people are you dealing that are living rough, that are unhoused, and that are, that are, the calls are coming to you?
So through the chair, I think it's important to note that the data and the evaluation shared with you is four distinct pilot areas, one in the northwest, one in the east of Toronto, and then one in the downtown core. One in the northwest, one in the east of Toronto, and then one in the downtown core, two in the downtown core.
Yeah.
The reason I want to give that geography is that, what I'm about to answer your question is that we are seeing different needs across the city. So, in downtown core, there is, I would say, close to three in 10 individuals that we receive calls from that are unhoused. But that number is not the same in our Scarborough and our northwest topical call type.
Right. But what percentage of calls, out of those 35 calls a day, what percentage of those calls are individuals that are unhoused, that are living rough?
I can't give you the percentage of the 35. I can give you by the pilot area.
Okay. And I, and I get the downtown core area, I get that. But I also know there's a large population of unhoused individuals across the city of Toronto, including Scarborough. So, I just wanted to just kind of understand that. If, if you're answering a call to an unhoused person that's living rough, how do you identify them and how do you, how do you find them?
So, through the chair-
Do you set up like a mutual meeting spot or something like that? Or do you go right into the encampments?
Yeah. So, through the chair, it depends how the call comes in. If the call comes in through our 911 pathway, we get some information about where the individual might be. Let's say at a particular address at a street corner, what they, what their descriptor might be, what they might be wearing or not, or not wearing. And then if the call comes in through 211, we also gather that same information. And so, it also depends if the call is being made by the individual who's asking for help or by a third party. In this case, I'll assume that it's a third party, so those descriptors are important. We arrive at the scene, we try to find that individual, and then we engage with the individual. And then if the individual requires transport to a shelter or another place where they feel safe, we transport them. And then we try and make arrangements to see them within 48 hours at that shelter, at that address. Or ask them for contact information of a loved one or individual that they feel comfortable us following up to see how they're getting on.
So, I draw the conclusion then, then you have space in your shelters in Toronto?
We have the same challenges that I'm sure is occurring here in Durham where our shelter spaces are over capacity.
Right. Okay. That's fair enough. You talk about the 48-hour follow-up. How's that done?
I feel like I'm answering all the questions.
Yeah, no, 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 that's good.
I could speak to that. So, I believe in, as was shared, there is a, a large number of the service users who do receive the follow-up care and support. It goes, it depends, they have to consent to receiving that care. But assuming they do, the teams are able to connect them in with the networks of supports that are available. We also fund certain programs through our servicing the community crisis system grant stream. So, there are resources that are easily accessible to the teams in order to ensure that there are things to refer the clients to in that follow-up care.
Okay. One of your slides showed a call volume that, that when you do the fast math, it's, it seems that a large majority of your calls are individuals that are indigenous. Is that, is that also geographic in the downtown core? Is that geographically across the city of Toronto? And was that a surprise in regards to that, that kind of data?
So, the service itself was focused particularly on ensuring adequate service to Black, Indigenous and equity-deserving groups.
So, the, the system was set up for that?
Yes.
Specifically?
That's right, yes.
Okay. That, that's a very important point. That's a very important point of clarification. So, I appreciate that. So, your crisis worker from the agency arrives on scene. If that individual needs to be transported to hospital, how, how does that happen? And how does, does the, then the worker go to the hospital, stay with the individual, do the handoff, the whole bit?
So, in some instances, if the client agrees to attend the hospital and feels that that is the best path forward for them, the team will transport them and wait with them. There are cases where the client may not consent, but the team determines that a hospital transportation is required. That's a very, very small percentage. It was less than 1% in the one-year evaluation. In those cases, they would radio in for Toronto Police Service to perform the mental health app.
1% would, would, would need hospitalization or care of hospitalization?
I, I believe it was just around 2% from the one-year report.
2%. And that includes your unhoused population that needed medical or psychological care? There was, that was evaluated that only 2% were requiring hospitalization or attention?
Yes, sorry. It was based on the one-year evaluation. So, all clients served across the city of Toronto.
Okay. So, you're, you're going into your second year or your third year?
We're going into the first year of our full expanded service. It's the second year of evaluating.
Okay. Where did this program create? Was it a Toronto-centric idea concept or was this taken from the best practice from around the world?
So, there was an intense jurisdictional scan that looked at over 50 different jurisdictions and the best practices in implementing a similar type of program there. Many were international at the time. As in the United States, they were a bit farther ahead with implementing some of these types of responses. But there is an extensive jurisdictional review that is available and also online.
So, could you tell me what cities or what geographic area in the United States that you refer to in regards to this program?
So, we, I just want to start home. We have the Gerstein Crisis Centre, which has been operating in Toronto for over 30 years. They have had a mobile team. It's one model we looked at. We also looked at some indigenous models. In Winnipeg, there's the Bear Clan, Bear Patrol Clan. That's one model. We looked at Car 87 in Vancouver. And obviously, the famous Kahoots model in Eugene, Oregon was a model we looked at. But then at the same time, New York City had the Be Heard program. And we also looked at the model in Los Angeles that's being developed and a few other models across the US. But you wanted me to highlight a few, so those are just some of the few models.
And based upon those models that you, you've modeled your model after, where do, where's your benchmark? How do you feel that you're doing based upon, upon their structure or their, their programs?
I would say we're doing quite strong. We are one of the only models in Canada that is now expanding citywide. A lot of the models in Canada are still in their pilot phase, so we are also moving forward on that. I would say the other distinction between our model and the American models that we looked at, besides Eugene, Oregon, a lot of the models in the US are integrated into their paramedic services. So, they're built into their medicalized approaches. And our model intentionally moved away from that model and moved towards a community-based service with the goal of connecting people to supports faster. And I think we've been able to successfully do that.
How many staff members do you guys have?
Close to 100 FTEs in the community partners as we expand across the city.
100 part of this program?
As part of the four agencies, close to 100 FTEs.
And so, you're expanding the program now moving forward. So, what does that look like?
So, 100 is the expansion, sir. Sorry, through the chair, 100 is, will, will be when we get citywide. The pilot data that you had, that was based on a workforce of close to 50 FTEs. 100 FTEs with our community agencies, but I should also mention city staff that support this program is close to eight FTEs.
Okay. And, and what, what will be your operating budget then with the expanded program? Because you're at 26 million now for 50 full-time employees.
So, the, the 26 is for the citywide expansion, so it's for the numbers that Mo said. A year ago, we were at 12 million.
Okay.
I would also like to note that as we get to citywide, which we're just on the eve of, and also start to get to capacity, because right now, we have, we have greater capacity than calls coming in. And there's a whole bunch of things that needs to happen for us to increase the calls. But we will be assessing to see how many more mobile teams need to be in each part of the city. This approach has been data-driven from the very beginning. And so, we will continue to provide Toronto City Council with the data that supports any further budget ask. And perhaps the last thing just to say is, well, you'll have more questions, but to your line of questions, I would say, one, that we have been clear from the beginning that while the city is taking leadership here, there are multiple municipalities, both in Ontario and across the country, that are interested in this model. We think that Ontario government needs to participate in supporting these, particularly in terms of the supportive ecosystem that is required for post-crisis care. So, we make that message everywhere we can as part of this particular work. And I think that it's important that as municipalities in Ontario and across the country explore this model and work to develop it, that we work together to try to achieve federal and provincial supports.
So, do you have support from the provincial and federal government?
Not right now. The city is funding it all. They are watching curiously this work.
So, do you not have support from the Ministry of Health or the Minister, the Associate Minister of Mental Health and Addiction at the provincial level?
Nothing specific at this time. So, our anchor-
From federal government? Sorry.
Not, not at this time.
Not at this time.
Our anchor partners all have existing relationships with Ministry of Health. So, part of their ongoing advocacy and communication is to, to their funder to also pay attention to the model.
Just out of curiosity, you, you do deal with the unhoused and, and living rough and people without shelter. How many people have you guys been able to connect and get them into proper housing?
So, that's not a specific intention of our service. We connect them-
I understand that, but I'm just wondering if you do have any examples of getting people successfully into, into housing?
I can speak to some of the results from the first-year evaluation in terms of housing referrals. 16% of the service users received a referral to housing.
Referral, and I appreciate that, but how many housed?
I'm not sure that we'd be able to give an exact number for that. We do have a number of crisis beds that are also related to the service that they can spend time in.
So, does this program help be able to get more crisis beds? Has this helped get more hospital beds? Has this program helped get more mental health beds in Toronto?
So, our anchor partners do work actively with the hospitals in their local areas. We do have a number of crisis beds that have been dedicated for the service through our grant stream. We have two. It's not additional-
In Toronto?
Yes. It's not additional funding. It's of the crisis-
Two beds?
An additional two.
Okay. So, what, how many beds do you have?
And then we also have eight beds through the shelter system.
So, I would say that part of your question is pointing out, back to my last comment, that this, for this service to be, it's got two wings fundamentally. So, one is to provide the kind of health, community health care that people need in this time of crisis. So, so we're doing well on that. But for the long-term success of reducing the amount of people in crisis that exists in our city, we need the rest of the ecosystem to work fundamentally better than it is. So, so that's issues related to housing, to shelters and to mental health supports. And that's why an advocacy part is part of the work that we are doing to ensure that the success that we are having in this service is intimately tied to our shelter strategy, housing strategy and intergovernmental strategy.
My last question, I, and I just want to get a clarification, is, is, my understanding is what you had communicated is this program really focuses in regards to certain aspects of your community. Indigenous, correct? And individuals that are the most vulnerable in our community, correct? It's specific, is it not?
Yes. It's, it's aim is to support any person in the city of Toronto experiencing a mental health crisis, substance use issue, et cetera. However, based on the data, based on our engagement with community and what we've learned in other jurisdictions, Toronto needs a particular focus on indigenous communities, Black communities and other vulnerable populations.
And that's what you focus on?
Absolutely. We build the infrastructure to meet those aims.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Chair. And most of my questions have been asked and answered by, yeah, Mayor Carter hasn't left much for me. What metrics, one question I want to ask, I'll follow, I believe Mayor Carter touched on. What metrics do you use to evaluate success, whether the program is successful or not?
Through the chair, that's a great question. So, we worked with the Centre for Addictions and Mental Health, CAMH, the largest mental health hospital in Canada, and their provincial support system program, PSSP, which regularly evaluates health interventions to build out a logic model and to identify key indicators. So, we have various indicators along the journey of the interaction. So, we review how many calls we get, we review how quickly we respond to those calls, we review the duration of those calls. But then the key question is, are people any better off? We also look at who are we interacting with? Are we able to, what kind of referrals are we providing individuals? Are we able to meet our 48-hour follow-up standard? And what are the social demographic descriptors of the individuals and the case management support? So, through all that, we're able to take a holistic approach to take a look at how well this program is working. And that's the underpin of the logic model that's in the CAMH evaluation report.
Thank you. And through the chair, of the calls you receive, what percentage would be repeat, repeat clients? I, I guess client is the best way of putting it.
Yes, that's a, through the chair, that's an excellent question and that's something that we're currently evaluating. We, right now, we anticipate that that volume might be as high as 10%. That might be callers who have called more than once. And we're trying to work to identify what are some of the structural reasons those individuals are calling more than once. As we know, I think it's important to state that the journey of somebody going through a mental health and addictions crisis is not linear. People do get better, then they also get worse, and they do get better and they do get worse. So, it's important to recognize that it's not, it's not a key variable that we no longer have calls from individuals. We plan to be there for individuals whenever they need support.
Thank you. One final question, Chair. What would you consider a good outcome?
I think it is the points that my colleague Mo spoke about that we're evaluating. It is all those pieces around our ability to support clients per our model. But I would, and do follow-up care as well. I would say, though, that the ultimate thing is around trying to reduce the number of persons in crisis calls that the city experiences. That is the ultimate test of our success. But certainly providing the model, a model that provides a community care response for people who are in crisis. That is what we are evaluating each year as we go along and then towards that ultimate goal.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Counselor Yamada.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. Thank you for coming out and presenting this interesting program. You, you talked about, I, I'm interested in, in where your funding is coming from. You indicated that there's no real support from the Ontario government. Do you get federal funding?
No, we do not. So, our current 2024 operating budget for the program of 26 million is all on the city tax base.
Okay. Call diversion. So, if this is sort of like a fourth emergency service, instead of police or fire or paramedics going out, you're, you're seeing call diversion, what kind of savings are other departments seeing based on this program?
That was not, through the chair, that was not in the first-year evaluation. But in the first-year evaluation, the experiences of Toronto Police Services, Toronto Paramedic Services and Toronto Fire Services who interacted with the service was captured in the CAMH report, which have indicated that the crisis workers responding to these types of calls is far more beneficial for the individual who's going through the crisis. And it has freed up police, paramedics and fire resources to attend other calls in the pilot areas.
Going forward, will you have sort of more distilled numbers on how much and what kind of savings you see down the road? Because if a lot of, if you're not getting funding from the provincial government or the federal, federal funding, if we go forward with a program like this, this is going to be solely based on the taxpayer. So, I would think that in any type of pilot project that we see here, we're going to have to see savings from other departments because it's tough to go to the taxpayer when we just increase taxes by 7.5%.
So, I would say to you that this is a point of great interest from a number of folks, including those members of city council. This is, it continues to be, I think, a challenging, a challenging piece because as we work with, our partner is Toronto Police Service. We need their support for this service to be successful in its long term and in its full vision. We've been able to do that through our memorandum of understanding and our relationship with the police chief and others in the leadership. I would say that this is something that we are, as we go citywide, we'll be putting more effort to, how can we all agree on, on the numbers? How do we have an evaluation that supports- How do we have an evaluation that supports those allocations of cost savings across all the emergency services? This is of particular interest to our Auditor General, who in her report in 2022 has mandated that we all work together as well to look at not only this model and joint evaluations, but other alternative models as well to free up police in particular, but our other emergency services to focus on their highest acuity calls. Paramedics is particularly interested and focused in us taking on their low acuity calls. So that is a key priority for citywide expansion in our first year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks very much for your presentation. Very interesting. Just a couple of quick questions. So we, we were told that the average salary is about seventy-eight thousand dollars a year for a hundred people. That's like a little less than eight million, and your budget is twenty-six million. So I'm curious what the other sixteen million is spent on.
Through the chair, the budget is largely flow-through dollars to our anchor partners. Some of the costs for our anchor partners include vehicles, include management staff, include caseworkers, also include offices, and also include radios. So there are a lot of large capital costs that are involved in setting up mobile teams across our city. And then on top of that, that twenty-six million dollars includes city staff costs, the eight FTEs that help support this program.
Okay, so I assume some of the offices and the flow-through to your down, sorry, to your downstream, that, that's where the follow-up comes from too? Are you paying for caseworkers to, to follow up? So you're adding to, some of that money is flowing through to the Social Services Department in the broad spectrum. Is that fair?
Yes, through the chair, our, our community anchor partners have case managers that help provide that standard that we have, which is ninety-eight case management support.
Okay, great. Now, one other question is, I saw in the, the stats there that four percent of those calls, you have to have other emergency service support, such as an ambulance perhaps taking somebody to the hospital, and I assume police support. So that leads me to these people coming to mental health crisis, and you're attending there first, and then you're calling the police. Have you had, had any of your workers suffer any injuries because of that? Because they're, I mean, mental health crisis, I've been there on, on the police side of things. And I know how they can get out of hand very easily. Have you had anybody, any of your workers injured in that?
So through the chair, the vast majority of calls are safe and there's no injuries, but we have accounted for less than five injuries in total, in a total of seven thousand calls.
Okay, not serious?
No, well, I guess through the chair, define serious.
Well, a push is not serious. A punch could be a serious, depending on where they punch. A knife is certainly serious, and that's where, what happens in a lot of police calls when somebody is in that agitated state due to their mental issues. You know, first weapon, I mean, police know that every time they go into a house, there's weapons in there because there's knives all over the place, right?
Yes, so through the chair, I think sort of just to pick apart that question. First, we, we give robust training, as my colleague Nicole said, around community safety strategies for our crisis workers, which involve, A, respond to all calls in pairs. B, if the call is dynamic and is unsafe, to retreat to their vehicle and request police or paramedic attendance. And C, as part of the training, ensure that they control the scene. So if the conversation begins in the kitchen, try and move it towards the living room and be aware of the situation. But specifically through the chair, to answer your question, there have been no serious injuries.
Okay, and just to add to that, all that de-escalation you're talking about, did the Toronto Police help with that training?
Yes, they're involved in our training program.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much.
Well, that exhausts my speaker's list. So on behalf of council and our staff team here today, I want to say thank you for your great presentation. And what we will do is I'll give you a minute. You do not want to stay for the rest of the day. So I'll give you a chance to, to vacate the council chambers. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, members of council, we'll continue with item four point two. Gary Mueller, Director of Affordable Housing Development and Renewal, and the redevelopment feasibility analysis for Durham Regional Local Housing Corporation. Good morning, Mr. Mueller. Mueller, when you're ready, please start.
Yes, thank, thank you, Chair Henry, and members of committee. The report in today's agenda, today's agendas package provides staff's recommendations on the future redevelopment of two community housing sites owned by the Durham Regional Local Housing Corporation. Both sites are in the city of Oshawa, where we foresee their transformation into sustainable, walkable, mixed-income communities. The work of Infrastructure Ontario has been valuable in highlighting the redevelopment opportunity and the overall feasibility of redevelopment. I'd also like to acknowledge Megan McDonald, our Manager of Affordable Housing Development and Renewal, for helping facilitate these projects, as well as our colleagues in finance, works, planning, and the CAO's office for their input and guidance. So these redevelopments help to advance many of the objectives of the region's master housing strategy. Approved in 2020, the strategy aims to approve affordability and access to housing with and without supports, protect the existing affordable housing supply, encourage housing diversity, and build capacity in the housing system. Expected outcomes of the strategy include the initiation of a thousand new affordable housing units by 2024, improved readiness for provincial and federal funding announcements, establishing a shovel-ready portfolio of potential projects aligned with affordable housing needs of our communities, and sustainable investment strategies to support new affordable rental development and the preservation and growth of community housing. This strategy includes ensuring optimal utilization of regional resources and developing an evidence-based strategy for managing and revitalizing the DRLHC portfolio. So in 2023, the region engaged Infrastructure Ontario to examine the feasibility of redeveloping the DRLHC sites at Malaga and Christine into modernized, mixed-income rental communities. And the view, the view is to leverage IO's affordable housing development expertise and build internal capacity and provide advisory and project management services. In 2023, the region also engaged Bowsfields to lead the development and implementation of an engagement, consultation, and communication strategy for the redevelopment of, of the two sites. And their work is appended to staff's report today. So the less complex of the two sites being presented today is at four nineteen to four fifty-one Christine Crescent. The site is about point six hectares or one point four acres in size, contains twelve semi-detached units, six of which are vacant. And it's the first phase of the ultimate redevelopment of the broader Nevis, Normandy, Le Mans neighborhood as a mixed-income community. Chopin Park, the eastern portion, is an underutilized green space which abuts the site and is a community revitalization opportunity. The site's designated residential in the city's official plan and R two in the city zoning bylaw, both of which require an amendment for redevelopment. So the proposed development concept would replace the existing semi-detached units with a new row of back-to-back townhouses and a mid-rise six-story apartment building with a four-story wing. The concept shows about a hundred and sixty-four units, eighty-two of which are market units, seventy affordable, and twelve rent geared to income replacement units, parkland and pathway and access improvements on an adjacent, underused portion of Chopin Park, onsite private open space that connects to the neighboring Chopin Park, as well as rooftop amenity space above the fourth floor of the wing, and surface and below-grade parking. The unit breakdown, which is shown on this slide, includes a mix of bachelor and one three-to-four bedroom apartments, as well as two-bedroom back-to-back townhouse units, and all of which have a mix of market, affordable, and RGI units. A detailed project feasibility analysis has been included within the report prepared by IO, which is briefly summarized in the staff report. And in summary, and based on the inputs and costing assumptions that have been provided by IO, the project cost is forecasted at about ninety-three million for financing modeled using regional funds of thirty-five million, as well as applying CMHC funding and financing sources. A cash flow analysis has been undertaken as well, which applies to a mix of market, affordable, and RGI units. These costs represent estimates, and as detailed project designs are developed and brought forward through site plan review and approval, they will be further refined. So before development applications are even filed, a series of technical studies are required that were identified through a pre-consultation meeting with the city. And when compared to the Malaga site, the Christine site has a shorter list of studies that includes things like a stormwater management study, functional servicing report, as it relates to sewer and water main infrastructure improvements along Normandy, Nevis, and Le Mans to achieve the overall redevelopment of the area, traffic impact study, which will include parking optimization, to ensure that we're not providing more parking than necessary, a noise study, archaeological assessment, Phase One and Two environmental site assessments, and a planning rationale report. A second pre-con meeting will be required by the city once the draft of the studies are completed for the city's review and comment. And once their comments are addressed, we'll be able to file the requisite OPA and rezoning applications. Once those applications are approved, we'll then be in a position to file the detailed site plan applications. So the second site at four sixteen to four forty-eight Malaga Road is nearly two hectares in size or about four point eight acres. It currently contains sixty-five three-story townhouse dwellings, about twenty-five are vacant, and it's next to Cordova Park and in proximity to the Cordova Valley Community Centre and the Oshawa Creek and recreational trail system. It's designated residential and open space recreation within the city's official plan. The eastern portion is identified as being within the Natural Heritage System and Hazard Lands. It's zoned R four A and R six B, which does permit townhouses, apartments, and long-term care. It's designated residential and open space. City has identified an OPA and rezoning is required to enable the redevelopment. A portion of the site is also close to the Oshawa Creek system, require, and is in a regulated area of the Central Lake, Ontario Conservation Authority. So in terms of the development concept for this site, the concept plan provides for about four hundred and forty units with a fifty-fifty split of market and affordable, a hundred and fifty-five affordable, sixty-five RGI replacement. So we have four hundred and eight apartments within two ten-story buildings and thirty-two townhouse units in stacked and back-to-back formats. The concept provides for indoor amenity space, natural heritage system buffer space, common floor, ground floor common space, community and commercial opportunity spaces, and surface and underground parking. So in terms of the unit breakdown, it's provided on the slide, which provides again a full mix of units ranging from bachelor up to three- and four-bedroom apartments, as well as two, three, and four-bedroom units within back-to-back and stacked townhouses. The project feasibility summary is provided in the report as well. The overall projected cost is estimated at two hundred and sixty million for this larger project and financing modeled using regional funds of ninety-five million with CMHC funding sources applied for the rest. Cash flow also has been modeled, applying a mix of market, affordable, and RGI units. A longer list of technical studies are required for this particular development due to its proximity to the Oshawa Creek and, and environmental lands. So an environmental impact study is required. So elements regarding tree preservation, hydrogeological, slope stability, vegetation, and other studies will be required by Cloca, as well as stormwater management assessments, functional servicing, traffic and parking optimization, noise, archaeological planning, Phase One and Two environmental site assessments, and related studies. And similar to the process with Christine, once these studies are prepared and drafted, a second pre-con meeting will be scheduled with the city. And then incorporating their comments through that process, we'll then be in a position to file the requisite applications. So extensive and early community, community engagement has taken place as part of this exercise. And the full summary of the community engagement work has been attached to the report. We're thankful for the work undertaken by Bowsfields, which has culminated in a thorough and robust community engagement exercise. So on this slide, what we see here is what has been taken through two phases of community engagement, ranging from initial meet-and-greets, neighborhood walks, community surveys, open houses, door knocking, online community meetings, a subsequent survey, and then an ongoing project webpage and email contact. So in terms of the Phase One community engagement, it dealt with some of the desires of the surrounding local communities in terms of redevelopment. And some of the themes that are covered include, from the standpoint of opening green space, creating recreation and play spaces for a mix of uses, ages, and seasons, ensuring the presence of greenery, garden spaces, and considering aesthetics, addressing community gardens around, and our community concerns around safety, and design and consideration for people with special needs. In terms of streets and connections, being mindful to accessibility of infrastructure, considering greenery, emphasis on traffic and pedestrian safety, and creating and maintaining broader community connections. In terms of housing types, generally there's a preference for townhomes and some medium-density forms. And we need to consider aesthetic and material choices and modern architectural designs, ensure easy maintainability of units, and explore unit sizes friendly for families and pets. And in terms of community spaces, consider theming, play spaces, explore kid-friendly public spaces and art, consider indoor space for community gatherings, and consider both indoor and outdoor exercise areas. In terms of the second phase of community engagement, that followed the release of the proposed concept plans for each of the sites. For Christine Crescent, we received at the time of the preparation of the report about sixty responses. The majority of the respondents liked the ideas of the entrances of townhomes off of Nevis and the central open space, apartment lobbies facing the central open space area, some of the four-bedroom units at the ground level, and improving connections and the conditions of neighboring Chopin Park, and the ideas of both exterior and interior amenity spaces. Generally, there's a more positive response to heightened density, but a desire for inclusive and accessible designs. And some were concerned about the potential for noise from public spaces, a loss of square footage in new units, and potentials for spillover parking. In terms of the second phase of engagement from Malaga, we received a hundred and eighty-three responders, responses. Majority of the respondents supported the ideas of increasing the amount of affordable housing mix in townhomes and apartments, providing multiple open spaces for a range of activities, new pedestrian connections, community use, amenity, retail on the ground floor of one of the buildings, and making sure that ground floors of buildings have active uses with greater visibility. Some were not in favor of proposed heightened density, while others supported increasing heightened density, while some favored the current proposal. The majority supported including more affordable housing, but some were concerned about safety and traffic with additional residents. In terms of other questions and comments, they centered on built form, design, accessibility, and location of mid-rise buildings, as well as parking locations and the mix of RGI and market units, the potential for family-sized units, and providing amenities for youth. So in terms of the recommendations that are before committee today, they do a few things. And first is that the redevelopment feasibility analysis prepared by IO be endorsed in principle. This will provide the framework for continuing on the path that we are on right now. The second is that, is to advance the redevelopment of Christine Crescent through a direct delivery model and subject to final council approval after municipal development approvals and refined costs and grant opportunities are obtained. This recommendation is an acknowledgement that the level of additional study, complexity, and time to deliver Christine, the Christine site will be shorter and is better positioned to build capacity in the system sooner. The third recommendation, that staff be authorized to prepare, submit, and support the necessary OPA and rezoning applications, retain the consulting expertise for technical studies, and undertake additional public consultation, is to simply continue on with the pre-development work to, to ready the sites for, for development approval. The last recommendation is meant to address the question of what's next, and while this, while work on these two sites are underway. And the recommendation is that staff be authorized to prepare a comprehensive strategy to increase affordable housing supply, to identify opportunities and best practices for transforming DRLHC sites into sustainable, mixed-income communities, identify opportunities for partnerships with private and not-for-profit housing providers, including RGI supply within buildings, aligning revitalization with other strategic priorities on poverty prevention, reducing homelessness, supporting transit-oriented development initiatives and environmental sustainability measures, and implementing a program of community housing improvement and redevelopment projects as part of a development of a long-term portfolio of shovel-ready projects. as part of a development of a long-term portfolio of shovel-ready projects. So this is just a reminder that was, that should committee endorse staff's recommendations, it does not mean that development will be starting tomorrow, but it does mean that we will be on our way to continuing on with the development process. We'll be in a position to retain our technical consultants, complete the required studies, and move forward with pre-consultation and ultimately the filing of development applications. Once the, once the applications are filed, ongoing community engagement will occur, and we'll be doing outreach at that time in concert with, with the city of Ashawah. So the studies completed so far for the two DRLHC sites set the stage for more detailed work. The pre-development studies that are required for OPA and rezoning are a priority to move forward with application submission. Additional public engagement will take place through the city's processes, and the recommendations help position the Christine Crescent site for quicker implementation and capacity building. So this concludes my presentation, and to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There are a number of questions. Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank your staff and the various partners you've brought in on these two projects. The public consultation has been more than I've seen in any other project in my history at Durham Region for housing redevelopment, and that says a lot, because I'm at 39 years. So I really want to commend the staff for that and for the outreach. I do have two, a couple of questions, however. One that is of significance that has not been addressed here is the ability of the local school systems to accommodate these massive increases in density. The Malaga unit goes from 68 to 44 units. The Christine credit goes from 12 units to 153, I think the number is. There are no schools in the area. At Christine Crescent, the nearest English-language public or Catholic school is Clara Hughes, which is up on north of the site. There is a French-language school at Bouchard on Wilson, which is close by, but, and there is no separate schools, English-speaking separate schools within miles of the site. At the Malaga site, the only school that's available in the area is Glen Street School, which is at full, also at full capacity. The nearest Catholic education school is Philip Coffee, which is almost at Flivory Avenue and Oxford Street. There is no access. They have to cross regional roads, walking distance is extreme. We're already seeing problems with the school buses not being able to get enough bus drivers and buses to move the current population. So I'm wondering, is there going to be an opportunity for the same Ashawah region of Durham? I would hope the ward counselors as well to meet with the school board and find out what their game plan is and how to address the housing. In Malaga, over 300 of the units are family-oriented units. There's only less than about 150 that are actually going to be one-bedrooms, who may have children as well, but the, the apartments go up and telescope to four bedrooms, so there may be lots of kids. My own math, based on the history from the school board, is this will generate approximately 295 children in addition to what's currently in the neighborhood. That's more capacity than Glen Street has today for a school. So I just wonder if you could address the issue of where do these kids go to school?
Thank you. And through the chair, we have had a pre-consultation meeting that did incorporate comments from both school boards as part of our initial due diligence. The response we got was the city, or the, the school boards did not provide concerns or issues as it relates to the capacities of the schools within their correspondence back through the pre-con process. That being said, we would welcome any discussions with the school board in order to optimize their capacity, if, as it were, or whatever strategies that the school board feels is appropriate in order to ensure that kids generated from both sites can go to the appropriate locations for schooling.
And I appreciate that outreach was done, although I would submit for your concern that neither of the school boards in Durham have ever indicated on any project at any time that they have any problem dealing with their students. They have a rubber stamp answer. But the reality is, where there was once 12 schools in the community, the school boards have sold off over half of them. And now we're seeing the population of the school aged, going beyond what their previous capacity was. Schools cannot handle them. And I know that residents in my community don't want to see their kids going on buses and going to Brooklyn or going to Raglan to go to school. You know, that there's got to be schools in the local neighborhood. And I won't even mention the fact they're building new schools in North Ashawah to accommodate the growth up there. I don't know how they can assume all the growth in South Ashawah as well. So I want to raise that with you. The second question I have is you talk about a direction from this council for Christine Crescent, but Malaga isn't mentioned. Why aren't we giving a direction to proceed on Malaga as well?
Thank you. And through the chair, the level of study that's required from Malaga includes an environmental impact study, and that is a longer and more involved process as it relates to both slope stability and environmental conditions as it relates to the Ashawah Creek. Comparatively speaking, of the two sites, Christine is simpler and can proceed quicker. They shouldn't, one shouldn't be necessarily tied to the other if there's an upfront recognition that one can be delivered sooner. So the idea is that with the foresight that we've been able to gain through this due diligence work and the amount of study that's required comparing the two sites, the quickest opportunity is with Christine, but we're going to be proceeding with both sites as quickly as possible. But I think there's just a recognition that one's going to be a little more difficult than the other.
No, and I do appreciate, because they're also different sizes.
That's correct.
Yeah, so my concern is that the public consultation was out there parallel, and I want to make sure we're clear in giving the information out subsequently, that we're not shoving Malaga, that in fact it is going to proceed, it's just that Christine, because of the simplicity of the design, et cetera, is going to move slightly quicker, but we're still going to proceed on Malaga.
Oh, no question.
Committee has to know that.
Absolutely. It's a, that's correct.
All right. And my last question, and you may be able to answer this, you may not. Given that all things work efficiently and that your studies reflect steps that allow you to move forward, when do you perceive shoveling the ground for both projects?
Through the chair, we will be looking to include within next year's capital budget a number for Christine, understanding that that should be the site that comes forward sooner. So it is going to be tied to, one, how quickly can we get through the sort of the development approvals process, undertake those studies? We'd like to have those studies completed by year end and then be in a position to file those applications early in the new year and subsequent to that.
But all things being approved, based on your projected timetable, are we looking 2026 for Christine?
I may have to defer to Megan McDonald. Yes.
Oh, it's got someone right behind me.
Excellent. Thank you. Through, in the IO, in the business, the feasibility analysis that IO prepared, they're estimating June 2026 would be when below-grade construction could start.
All right. And for Malaga, we're looking 27, 28?
Sorry? I just have to scroll. That was June 2027. Sorry, below-grade is also June 2026. Yes.
So we're going to start construction, sorry, we're going to start construction if all things work out in late 2026?
Based on the preliminary feasibility analysis that's been prepared, yes.
And when do we perceive occupancy?
I believe that would be an 18-month construction period, if I'm not mistaken. For Christine, it could be longer for Malaga because it's likely to be phased.
So we're looking sometime 2028? Spring 2028 for occupancy? Would that be a fair estimate?
Yes. Currently lease-up stabilization for Christine is expected for December 2028, with a bit of six-month period to do so.
All right. I would hope in the next steps in the consultation of that information could be provided to the area residents. Right now, there's an awful lot of questions, and I think it'd be helpful, not just the people that are living in the current complexes, but also the neighboring property owners around the sites, to know that this is our best-case projected timetable, so that at least they have some idea that they're not going to look at construction starting in the fall of this year, that it is going to be 26, 27, 28 before these projects are in completion. So those are my questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Carter?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Gary, thank you for your presentation. I greatly appreciate it. Just a clarification, I noticed that there is talk about market, affordable, and RGI units. So through the design process, I'm presuming that you've already had part of your preliminary discussion, that you understand the market, the market units, the affordable units, and the RGI units have to meet a certain standard in regards to the attractiveness and the type of finishes that will be necessary. Is that fair to be able to say that you've taken that under consideration?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And that's a really important aspect, not just in regards to the unit, but to the design of the facility, green space, community space, you know, all of those kind of things. So I'm just asking to make sure. The one puzzling that I do have, and I'm really pleased about seeing all this moving forward, and I know this, you know, the Ritson School site, everything I think is absolutely wonderful, I struggle with your per-unit cost. And your per-unit cost on Christine Crescent is $568,000, almost $570,000 per unit. I estimated at about 850 square feet the units would be, and I think I'm probably overestimating there. But your per-square-footage cost is $667 per square foot at Christine, and at Malaga, it's $694 per square foot. We own the land in Malaga, correct?
Yes.
We've got the property at Christine, I think, that is being acquired by, from the city. Also, do these costs include a land cost? Is it included in that?
Through the chair, no, they do not, but they are in keeping with the industry costs that we've been seeing through comparative 905 municipalities.
I appreciate that. So I did my own due diligence to talk to somebody that is a major developer in Toronto that does only this type of work. He's informed me that the pricing that, based upon our project, should be somewhere in the neighborhood of between $375 and $440 a square foot. And that's, that's, he's an expert in this field. He's been doing it for over 30 years. And so I just, gives me pause, and I'm asking that, I think there needs to be an evaluation and to try and see, are our numbers correct? I'm not, you know, I just think that based upon what I saw, I kind of went, wow, that's unbelievable. If you want that gentleman's information, I'll make it available to you off bar if that would be helpful, but I'd ask you to take that into consideration.
Thank you. And certainly, we will, once we are undertaking the detailed design, we'll certainly have a better position to provide.
And I get that, and I think you're trying to project also two to three years. So you're also taking that into consideration, I presume, so that you're looking at inflationary costs. But it just, it was just kind of one of those kind of things that set me back on my heels when I saw the numbers. The biggest thing that I want us to take into consideration, and by the way, Malaga, I think, is a wonderful project with beautiful green space. That park that's right there is such a great community asset. I mean, you couldn't, you couldn't ask for a better kind of surrounding. So I'm excited about that project, but I really do think that we have to really look at the finishings and the, and the community space that would be made available in these buildings. Myself and Counselor Chapman traveled into Toronto to see one of the new builds in Toronto, and we were quite taken back by the thought process of detail in regards to community space, believe it or not, even quiet space for individuals that may need quiet space. And I think both of us found that quite surprising. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mayor Foster, good morning. Mayor Foster, we can't hear you. Mayor Foster, we're not able to hear you. Mayor Foster, Mayor Foster, I'm going to come back to you, and we'll work on this challenge with staff. Adam Clark, can you?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Kerr.
Thank you, Chair, and through you to Mr. Mueller. First of all, I like both projects. I think they check off the boxes in terms of variety of housing types and affordability, so thank you for that. My question is an environmental quality of life question, and I'm wondering, is it possible to go to the slide presentation that shows the Christine Crescent development, please? If it's not, I'll carry on with my question, but yeah, keep going. Yeah, so there's this one, and I think there's one that's an actual photograph that shows the area. Yes, thank you. So I guess my question might have been answered partially by the previous pectograph, and I see all these lovely trees in the area. And I also know that just south of this is the 401, and I'm wondering, how many of these trees can be saved in terms of just an environmental piece, but also a noise-reduction piece from the highway? So if you go to the previous slide, yes, are those existing trees, are those trees to be planted? And I'm just wondering if there's can be some care and concern for maintaining as many trees as possible between the site and the 401.
Thank you. And through the chair, those would be new trees. This is a, a full redevelopment of the site, extensive grading would be necessary. Detailed design hasn't taken place, but I would imagine retaining walls and those kinds of things in order to create a stable site. That being said, when we are looking at redesign work in the adjacent park space, we will be commissioning in our risk report to identify those specific trees, ensuring that they are preserved, and perhaps building them into what the appropriate design would be. So we're certainly mindful of it.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Mayor Petrie?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and I just wanted to, I wish everyone a good morning and thank staff for, for working with the city and in ensuring that the ward counselor and I were, were able to, you know, provide for the input and the feedback that I think has been very important, not only in facilitating the park, but especially the project. And as Chair of the Development Department in the city, I have to say there's a huge amount of respect for what's being done. Just wanted to ask through you, Mr. Chair, if there's anything else that this council body could do, because I know there are a number of council members are having some technical difficulties that have sent, you know, questions or concerns my way to be able to convey, and I think that, you know, harmonizing the general theme would be that the desire is to move forward quicker. Is there anything through you, Mr. Chair, that this council body can do to help you harmonize the development process, seeing as it is our land, and advance the development process in a, in a more timely way, so we're providing for these units sooner than later?
Thank you. And through the chair, that's, that's an excellent question. We've been working in tandem with city staff to try to optimize the amount of study that's required as part of OPA and rezoning, and then those things that are required for site plan to push those more technical pieces off the site plan. We've been able to do that in terms of the work as it relates to adjacent park space and city land. That has been very, very collaborative and a very interesting process, actually. So I think certainly on the development approval side, anything that can be done, you know, really, I think is sort of in terms of zoning and official plan amendment work, but we also recognize that we have homework to do on our end in order to create the requisite studies so that the city can move on as well. So I think there's a mutual acknowledgement that both, both parties want to move as quickly as possible, but we'll certainly be mindful of any opportunities as they arise.
Yeah, through you, Chair Henry, I appreciate that very much to you and the team to note that, in particular, these two projects are not only ones that are needed, but they also add an element of excitement within the community. add an element of excitement within the community, as you heard from the Ward Counselor and the mayor, and I think that anyone on Oshawa Council would suggest that these are very exciting projects. So anything you can do to figure out what sort of, you know, elements need to be harmonized and streamlined, whatever the buzzwords are, I know that our staff have been very eager to make sure that we're able to advance what we can within our authority. And I know at your end, you're going to look at opportunities as well. So I'm very glad to hear that. There's just a few other notes that I just needed to, through you, Mr. Chair. When considering the cost per unit, obviously, you know, individuals are going to look at it and say, you know, it's a very high cost. I think the concern that I would have, not to mention, you know, the one that Mayor Carter brought forward, which is the actual cost, but what's the projected cost? Because we're looking at X per square foot, but have we looked at, you know, what we've incurred in past, and, you know, whether it's a 20% up or a 40% up? What sort of play do we have in terms of contingency that we may be faced with?
Right. And through the chair, the one thing that comes to mind in terms of development costs is the cost of parking. And that, I think, is an opportunity that when we're dealing with the, with the OPA and zoning amendments, to ensure that that parking supply is not more than we need, because it does become a costly component of it. So I think there's, there's that aspect of it. And the way the costs have been included in the, in the proposal now, it simply includes the existing city parking standard. So if there's a way to optimize that, I think that would go a long way to help reduce costs as well. In terms of the other aspects of it, I think we'll just have to go through the detailed design and have another look at, you know, those per-unit costs as they come forward. But certainly something we're mindful of. In terms of contingencies, they were baked into the overall forecast, but again, we'll have more detailed estimates once we have project designs.
Mr. Chair, I want to thank Mr. Mueller and his team, and offer my continued support. I look forward to seeing the projects, hopefully sooner than 2028. I know that there are a number of different stars that have to align, but from our end, I know that there's a, you know, a very keen sense of availability when it comes to advancing these projects, because they'll benefit the community tremendously, and I think that they're going to be a flagship for the region of Durham's housing portfolio. Thank you.
Mayor Foster, could you please push your request to speak again? Mayor Foster, until we get the technical challenges of the day resolved, I will have staff follow up on, later to answer all of your questions. Members of council, that exhausts item 4.2. We'll move on to 4.3. Mr. Mueller, Director of Affordable Housing and Development and Renewable, approaching housing delivery at 300 Ritson Road South in Oshawa.
Excuse me. Okay, so, thank you. Thank you, Chair Henry, and members of committee. This report and presentation speaks to a key housing revitalization and placemaking and community-building opportunity in central Oshawa. Like the previous presentation, it too is a key initiative to help advance the region's objectives under the master housing strategy. The report also highlights that increasing the supply of affordable housing requires the coordinated efforts of many, and a need to work in partnership with local municipalities, other levels of government, housing providers, and the development community. So, the Ritson School Site is situated at 300 Ritson Road South. It's about 2.1 hectares or 5.3 acres in size. It contains a former public elementary school building, close to 40,000 square feet, and is one, it's in one of seven health neighborhoods that our Health Department has identified as being a focus to build health and well-being due to a greater incidence of female lone-parent families, a greater percentage of seniors who live alone, a higher percentage of dwellings in need of major repairs, a higher percentage of the population spending more than 30% of their income on shelter costs, a higher percentage of children in low-income households, a higher percentage of low-income households, a higher levels of unemployment, and the community is at a high rate of core housing need. The region purchased the site in 2022 as a strategic opportunity to provide sustainably-built, mixed-income, mixed-use housing with community services and support. So a community needs assessment was undertaken on behalf of the region and is attached to the report in your agenda package. It highlights the community engagement processes and identifies current and future needs of residents that we should seek to address through the reuse of the site. It speaks to addressing housing affordability and attainable housing by providing single and two-bedroom housing units, providing a variety of physical and mental health supports consolidated in a single-floor building, offering childcare, educational, recreational programs for youth, improving ongoing access to community programs and services, including education, training, or recreational programs accessible to people of different skills, abilities, and backgrounds. It speaks to considering recreational or drop-in programs for seniors, supporting continued reconciliation in partnership with Indigenous peoples. It speaks to considering flexible spaces for a variety of programs, providing opportunities for placemaking, protecting and providing for parks and open space, providing a mixed-income, mixed-tenure housing model, which should be considered to improve financial feasibility. It also speaks to partnering with private sector partners and one or more nonprofit organizations for housing, and considering a recreational facility to broaden the range of programs and training that could be provided on-site, and providing a balance of market housing with affordable and below-market housing, together with community servicing uses. So in terms of the Ritson School Building itself, it holds an important place within the community. The school was named after John Ritson, an early settler and Oshawa's first school teacher. The building was originally constructed in 1923 with a six-room addition constructed in 1928. Additions were later constructed in the 40s and the 70s. The school was closed by the Durham District School Board in 2012 and was later designated under Part IV of the Ontario Heritage Act to be of cultural heritage value. The 1923 and 1928 architectural styles merited the heritage designation. The building is not currently suitable for reuse. A lot of work needs to be done to bring the building to a state that it can be occupied. Architectural, engineering, structural, heritage, and other design and construction work needs to be undertaken and completed. But the reuse of the building and the surrounding site will be an opportunity that will be the subject of interactive community engagement. There's an opportunity to focus on how the public outdoor elements of the site can be reimagined, how the building and the site can contribute to placemaking and the reuse of the building, and how it can complement heritage conservation efforts. Through initial work, we recognize that the site has great placemaking potential. The school building is a landmark and a signature feature that merits sensitive restoration, adaptive reuse, and can form part of a reimagined site with complementary buildings of compatible scale. So the policy context of the site contemplates redevelopment and intensification. In Vision Durham, the region's new official plan, which is adopted by Regional Council last May and is still waiting provincial approval, the site is within a protected major transit station area. This designation allows for medium and high-density residential uses, mixed-use development, commercial and retail, recreational and community amenities such as parks, urban squares, and trail systems. The city of Oshawa's official plan designates the site as residential. It is within the downtown main central area boundary and allows for medium and high-density residential uses. It permits a wide variety of high-rise and mid-rise development with some low-rise, and buildings at corner locations should be generally higher than buildings at the mid-block. We'll be working with the city regarding zoning permissions, since the current zoning needs to be amended to enable redevelopment in keeping with the official plan policies. So the city of Oshawa is taking important steps to update its plans in light of the future GO station that will be coming to central Oshawa. The city is completing a land use and transportation study for the Oshawa Protected Major Transit Station area. A new GO rail station is planned south of Cowan Park between Simcoe and Ritson, and the Ritson School Site is within 500 meters or about a nine-minute walk to the future station. The Ritson School Site is within the study area that the city is currently looking at. A land use plan was prepared for the study and projects that about 25,000 total homes or about 51,000 residents, and 8,500 jobs will be within the study area. It lays out land uses within the study to accommodate additional growth. And under the current plan, the Ritson School Site, which is just on the opposite end of the purple arrow on the slide, is identified as Medium Density 1 Residential with a parkland contribution area and an active non-vehicle linkage. So in light of the work that we've been undertaking in support of the potential redevelopment, we are, and the work that's currently being undertaken by the city, the city is considering refinements to the land use plan before recommending a final alternative to Oshawa Council for endorsement. So as highlighted in the report before you, regional staff have recommended a slight uptick in the designation from Medium Density 1 to Medium Density 2 Residential, and shifting a location of the parkland contribution area and refining the active non-vehicle linkage to a location behind the school. And all of that is to simply align the redevelopment aspirations for the site with the work that is already being undertaken by the city. And the request reflects the site's location onto arterial roads where additional growth is normally expected and is a positive response to the conditions that are underway. So the work that has been done so far for the Ritson School Site can be described as visioning and concept development. And after carefully reviewing the site conditions, the context, all of the policies, and work that is being undertaken both at the region and the city level, a series of development principles have been prepared and assembled, and they're meant to inform how new development should be shaped on the site. So in terms of planning for the site, I think we recognize that it should be planned based on future parcels and a phasing approach. The site is relatively large and should proceed in phases, and they are complementary. The report speaks to prioritizing Block 1, which is the area behind the existing school, where we see the opportunity for about 160 units in that location. The existing school building should form part of a future phase or a block that will be reused to accommodate a mix of community and public uses together with new housing opportunities. The site should accommodate a mix of both market and affordable rentals, looking at a minimum of at least 30% affordable, a mix of unit sizes, one, two, and three-bedroom units, a preference for quick delivery through modular construction, and partnerships with nonprofit, Indigenous, cooperative, or other non-market providers would be encouraged. We want to ensure excellence in urban design. We want to have contextually-sensitive designs, buildings that frame streets and public spaces with frequent sheltered pedestrian entrances. We want a high standard of architectural excellence, and ensuring crime prevention through environmental design principles are adhered to through, through new concept development. We want to promote pedestrian accessibility and circulation, providing for pedestrian circulation routes, sidewalks, public open space, and active and visible open spaces, and buildings surrounding a pedestrian plaza behind the school building should be, should be open, transparent, and accessible, and we need to design for accessibility. We need to embrace built and cultural heritage on this site. Buildings will form part of a cohesive community and centered on the renovation, protection, enhancement, and adaptive reuse of the Ritson School Building itself. We need to include opportunities for reconciliation and Indigenous cultural heritage. In terms of meaningful connections, of course, promoting transit use, and ground floors of buildings should provide services to the broader community that are accessible by local transit. We need to ensure that we plan for climate resiliency, including energy efficiency measures to reduce future utility operating costs and RGHG emission footprint is reduced, and applying the Durham standard to reduce the urban heat island effect through measures such as low-carbon, net zero, or greener cool roofs, or other low-impact development measures. In terms of placemaking, we need to provide opportunities for placemaking on sites like this, where public gathering is invited through building placement, landscaping, and streetscaping design. And with the view, we want to provide a vibrant and attractive public realm, where we can perhaps incorporate art, cultural, and heritage to contribute to a sense of place and identity. In terms of some of the basics, providing for traffic connectivity, ensuring driveway access points and existing intersections don't have conflicts, providing for appropriate open space areas, and ensuring parking and servicing is not the dominant feature and is tucked away to, to optimize our public open space and public, and public space opportunities on the property. So this, this slide illustrates what we're referring to as a demonstration plan. Now, a demonstration plan is a way to visually represent the development principles on the site in a more cohesive way. And what we see here is three development areas or block. Block 1 is the area identified in blue. It's a rectangular area about 0.6 hectares or about 1.5 acres in size. It's behind the school building. It's about, it's over 100 meters by nearly 60 meters in size, and it's in this area that we, we believe it can accommodate about 160 housing units in a range that includes townhomes and low- to mid-rise buildings ranging from four to six stories. Here, we think a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units with some at-grade non-residential, and onsite publicly-accessible open space can be provided. In this demonstration plan, a single level of underground parking is included, but other components should be addressed as part of development on this block as well. For example, a new public sidewalk on Huron Street. We believe that a new local road on the north side of the site is an appropriate response to ensure that we're not creating traffic conflicts by access points closer to the Ritson Olive intersection. We want to ensure front-facing architecture on all building faces and that parking and servicing doesn't face neighboring residents. All of the functional components within Block 1 should be accommodated in Block 1 so that future phases can proceed on their own without having to accommodate what Block 1 might otherwise rely on. So in terms of the broader demonstration plan, the intent is that the existing, the school building, the building in pink, is retained. The school building will be used for community uses and also represents a unique housing opportunity. The demonstration plan provides for an open space area in front of the school, keeping views to the main facade and preserving the importance of the school building as a landmark in the community. New buildings are shown on either side, framing it to the open space, and the actual design of the open space area and how it responds to the heritage character of the building is a subject that will require detailed discussion with the city. Going further south, a 10-story building is shown along Olive Avenue, using the south section of the school site and neighboring region-owned land. So here, residential, non-residential space would be provided at grade as part of a pedestrian-oriented mixed-use building. A future development block at the corner includes properties under private ownership. So the demonstration plan shown on this slide provides the potential for about 450 units. So in terms of images and precedence, here are some of the ideas of how the pedestrian environment may begin to take shape are shown on this slide. So in the center, the concept of a pedestrian-oriented open space, we've referred to it as a plaza, but it's at the center of the site, behind the school building. So the rear of the school building would represent a new and active, accessible building face, where above-grade residential would look out onto a redesigned pedestrian-only open space area. Direct pedestrian access to the school and surrounding buildings will ensure that the space is active, where recreational, non-residential, commercial, or other services could be provided. It would be easily accessible to the surrounding community as a new, interesting, safe, and walkable space. The intent with these images is to illustrate at a high level the concepts, to show scale, a potential vision for the pedestrian realm, opportunities for placemaking, while inviting creativity for development proponents wishing to come forward to help implement the vision. So the approach being recommended by staff is to engage housing providers. The region has had positive experience with both private and nonprofit housing providers to optimize new affordable housing, such as through the At Home Incentive Program, where the process is application-led, open and transparent, and focused on affordable rental housing. By providing clear and predetermined criteria, staff are able to evaluate and make informed recommendations to Regional Council. So to engage the nonprofit and private development community, staff are recommending a request for expression of interest or an REI process in order to obtain insights and market information from builders and developers with interest in the site and the development program. The focus on the portion of the site shown as Block 1 is intended to reflect the area that is likely the least complex and is in a better position to move quicker. The REI would be publicly posted and non-binary. The REI would be publicly posted and non-binding and would help have staff get answers to five key questions. First, is there an interest in development within a long-term land lease arrangement? A lease arrangement retains ownership and ensures that the development will maintain long-term affordability as a condition of the lease. Second, is there interest in undertaking and completing development approvals based on the development principles? As highlighted earlier, there are a number of aspirations we're trying to achieve on the site, from affordable housing to heritage preservation, public open space, place making, walkability, great urban design, and climate resiliency. These will be factors in determining what level of interest we may receive. Similarly, staff would like to gauge the interest from companies with expertise in undertaking affordable and mixed-market development models. A mixed-income development model is proven to achieve better and more sustainable outcomes. Also, staff are interested in knowing whether there is expertise and experience in the planning, development, and construction of modular housing. This approach can expedite new housing and lends itself well to mid-rise buildings. And finally, staff are interested in getting information on whether there are cost-effective elements of the DERM standard that can be pursued while enabling project feasibility. On the other hand, are there design features that are prudent or appropriate that are not already captured under the DERM standard? So the information that we gain through the REI will give staff important insight on the interest and capacity to develop from the private and nonprofit development communities. So while the REI process is underway, additional steps will need to be undertaken by staff. Of course, there is a need to advance detailed studies. And using the information that we've already assembled, we need to assemble information pertaining functional servicing, stormwater management, onsite geotechnical work, environmental site assessments, transportation and parking supply, heritage work, urban design and landscape work, and other studies as may be required by the city once we go through a pre-consultation process. Staff will participate in the MTSA study and hope that can come forward with updates to the official plan and zoning as soon as possible. And public outreach will also take place on the development approach and the principles highlighted today, followed up by a report to committee and council on the results of the REI process. So in conclusion, the Ritson School Site is a unique opportunity. It can provide new, affordable, and mixed-income housing. It can contribute to place making and community revitalization. The built heritage of the site can be complemented through new development. On-site programming can respond to the needs of the local community. The approach that staff are recommending through a non-binding REI process will gauge the interest of the development community on achieving these objectives while staff continue to move forward on technical work. The focus on Block One behind the school is being presented since it seems to be the least complex portion of the site where the opportunity for new mixed income and affordable housing can be delivered sooner. This concludes my presentation, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have a number of questions. Counselor Mayor Petrie?
Yeah, the question relates to the built form through you, Mr. Chair. I think obviously you're going to be engaging in an adaptive. It's a really nice way to be able to preserve this property. There's a lot of members of the community that have gone to school here that have messaged and said, you know, what's going to happen? I know that we've discussed it in various formats, whether at the staff level or in different public meetings, and just wanted to understand a little bit more of, you know, some of the positive elements that'll occur as a result, because I know that this is a really prominent sort of location and building.
Thank you. And through the chair, the reuse of the school building itself is a complex measure. Certainly, the building as it stands today is not suitable for reuse. A lot of structural repair, stabilization, and improvement work needs to occur soon. In terms of its reuse, we foresee the ground floor of the building certainly lending itself to community uses with an opportunity for residential above. It is a large ground floor. It's about 16,000 square feet. It's a good size, and it is immediately accessible. The reuse of the heritage elements within the building itself, there's a number of interior components, things like stairwells and features, flooring, and things like that, that our heritage consultant has indicated that are worthy of reuse and factoring into new project design. So it is a complex matter, and it does need to have a careful look by heritage architects, structural engineers, and structural architects and those things. Therefore, making it, you know, a bit more of a longer program in terms of its eventual reuse. So the way the concept has been laid out is to, one, be sensitive to the way the building presents itself to the street and frame it in a way that we can actually start to reimagine how that open space could be reused in a way that might be a bit more formal. So I would, and in terms of the engagement component for that aspect, that is something that both the design of that open space area and who's, and who might be interested in elements of that design, that would very much form part of our community outreach and I think would be central to what the project vision is here. So it's an important consideration.
Appreciate that. Through you, Mr. Chair, I remember being through the building in a period where I represented the area, and I did that for personal reasons too, because my mom actually went there. But I did recall that there, you know, there are challenges just even when it was operational. And just want to ask through you, Mr. Chair, I know that in the presentation, you know, you've provided us with some detail, but is there a consideration to essentially, you know, working on the housing project separate of the school so that we can get that moving quicker and then maybe not use the school for housing, but maybe something, like you said, more community-related so that we're not into some of the challenges that'll be incurred?
Right. Well, certainly the intention of today's report is to highlight that there are parts of the site that can move sooner, and the area behind the school is, it lends itself to that. The reuse of the school itself, there's an acknowledgement that it's going to take some time, but the development elsewhere on the site shouldn't have to wait for all of that work to come forward.
Excellent. And again, through you, Mr. Chair, our staff at the city are eager and available to make sure that if there's anything that we can do to harmonize and optimize the development process so that you can advance the project sooner, we're there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nicholson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to raise the bugbear again of schools. As you move forward with your options for design, would you be looking at the potential of building a school within the complex? In Region Park in Toronto, they have did a major redevelopment of a very similar process, but they've included schools on the ground floor of some of the towers. And this has allowed the children who are going to live in these communities opportunity to have school that they can go to. For those members of regional council who are not familiar with the area, there are very few schools, again, very similar to what we used on Kristin and Malaga. The school boards have sold off, all the schools in the area, and there's nothing left. Holy Cross is gone. Francis Mahoney, I want to mention, the Donovan Collegiate is gone. We could go down the list of virtually every school that was there for 50-plus years is now disappeared. But we're projecting, again here, 440 new units, mostly their families, with no schools within easy walking distance. The nearest school to this location is further down Olive Avenue. It's called St. Edwick's Catholic School. I think this particular chamber is about half the size of that school. It's a very tiny school. There are no others in the area. There are no public schools close by. The ones that are within two miles or so are filled to the brim. In fact, they built Clara Hughes further north of us, and within one year, they had to add 12 portables to the school they just built. So I'm really concerned, and I'm sure the ward counselors, the area are concerned, that where are the kids going to go? So, you know, if that means we have to give up a little housing to put into school, you know, or raise it from 10 to 12 stories in order to get the school on the ground floor, I think you need to include that in your reach out to the development ministry. A lot of the developers I've talked to think this is a great idea, that as well as a community space, we need schools in our urban villages, for want of a way of putting it. Second question is, and I'm going to ask the same question I asked previously, all things working out well, projection as to, timescale as to when we start digging and when this project will be occupied?
Thank you. And through the chair, in terms of the first question related to schools, the, we have had early discussions with the school board in terms of what would an urban standard of school look like? Normally, the school boards in their site development and site acquisition processes want a five-to-eight-acre site, you know, providing for a traditional standard model that provides for a certain level of parking and pickup and drop-off areas and all of those various things. This is quite different, and they do not have a model, as I understand it, for an urban standard of school, which I think is something that does need to be looked at. It isn't necessarily isolated to this site. I think it's a thematic issue, I think, that should be looked at in terms of enabling intensification within our communities and helping to support additional, you know, new families as part of that growth scenario.
Well, I do appreciate that, and again, it's not just for the site. Directly south of the site, we have 14 buildings going in with the highest being 42 stories. Again, no schools. As part of the GO development, we're going to get more and more of these urbanized developments. On Stellar Road, the border between Oshawa and Whitby, we're now projecting an equal number of apartments eventually going in there. Again, no schools. As we see intensification all across the region and more and more towers as opposed to the green space being eaten up, we need to have a policy that works out with both school divisions and possibly the Ministry of Education about how we're going to fund schooling, how we're going to develop schooling. We just can't slap everybody on buses and, you know, and send them northwards. And whether it's Pickering, Ajax, Whitby, Oshawa, even Clarrington and Curtis, we're going to see many more of these towers, and we don't have the green space to build schools. It just doesn't exist. I mean, short of expropriating the entire neighborhood, there's no way you can get five acres. It doesn't happen. So we need, we need that to be addressed as a very serious step in our planning process and our development process for housing, and we need to pick the brains of the private sector of just how they would proceed to address this issue, because they may have some ideas as well that would benefit of ourselves. So the second part that we have to address, and I think you addressed part of it, is amenity space. You need places to people to buy food. You need other services when you add this kind of density. So again, as part of the design concept, we need to look at, are there ways to build in on the ground floors, possibly facing out into the pedestrian mall, and opportunity to have some stores, some ability to provide services to service the community, not just in this project, but also in the surrounding community where there is very little? We're really creating an urban village here, and we need to look at it as an urban village. So I would just encourage you to be as broad as possible in your thinking and definitely go outside the box on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to Mr. Miller. That was a good presentation. Thank you. You mentioned that this is Block One. Block One of how many? Is that what that white area to the southeast of this development is? I'm just wondering if you could elaborate, because I have a question in that area.
Thirty minutes, I'm up for you.
I guess that's taken as a request. Bring that slide up on the screen. Thank you. So while we're waiting for this to come up, I'll go to my first question. It's mentioned that Block One has 160 units.
If we could go to Slide 10.
Yeah, Block One would be 160 units. This is my question. That does not include the school, but those 160 units would be contained in all of those mid-rise and townhouses that are shown. That's a total of 160 units just there.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And if there should be residential units put into the upper floors of the old school, how many units have been projected that can be put in there?
Well, the, again, at a very high level, we estimate 30 possibly within the school, but again, no detailed design has been undertaken.
So roughly 180 to 200 units total?
But in really the way the blocks are, I think the two wing buildings and the school itself is about 130, 140, I think, overall, so sort of 60, 60, something like that. So that's sort of generally what the layout would be. And the third block, which is basically the lands to the south, there's a future development area which isn't included within the 450, but that third block is the building, the 10-story, which is illustrated on the plan.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get a handle now on when residents say to me, because this happens to be in my ward, it's very close to Counselor Nicholson's ward, how many units are going to go in there? If we get this fully built out and there's Block One and there's all those units, townhouses and whatever, and perhaps this Block Two, how many within a range do you see of units being available on this site once it's built out?
This demonstration plan that you've seen today is 450 units.
450? Okay. So that 160 was just the school plus the wings. It didn't include the?
The 160 is just the area behind the school in the current field.
Okay. So now I'm confused again. So if that's just behind there, the school and the two wings would be projected to be how many?
I believe that was 140. Is that correct?
That's 140. Okay, and then we have the potential for that other block. Thank you. So about 450. So that is in line with what I've been trying to tell residents for the last couple of years. It's around, you know, 270 to 450 kind of thing, depending on how it's built out. Thank you. So that's good. As to the school question, if you're going to bus people, there's always Village Union, which is on the south side of Gibb, and it used to be a high school. There's apparently a lot of room in there, no portable, so that might be an interim measure, and I understand Counselor Nicholson's vision for First Avenue with a urban school built into that, which I think is quite excellent, actually. Other questions related to the mini-homes that are at Dean Avenue and Banting. My understanding was that the microhomes, mini-homes that are, the 10 of them, were to be relocated to this site and maybe expanded upon because that's where the Gibb-Olive extension is going to go through there. Is that therefore now not the case, and those units will disappear once the road goes through and this site gets developed?
Through the chair, given the opportunity that's presenting itself on this site, accommodating the microhomes on this site is probably not the best solution, and I think another appropriate site is probably a better solution once we get a better understanding of timing of when the Gibb-Olive extension is going through.
Okay. Thank you. It's after some initial trials and tribulations, I think those homes are proving to be a valuable addition, so I hope we can find another location. The next piece I have, two pieces, through you, Mr. Chair, the courtyard area, I'm wondering, I mean, it's very nice to show walkways and trees, but I'm wondering if that couldn't somehow be, like, where's the play area for kids? I guess that's my concern. We talk about amenities. Can there be thought given to where the kids in this development would have a proximal location to go and blow off some steam? Is that possible in that courtyard area?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I'd love to see consideration to that. And the last thing is through you, Mr. Chair, is the inclusion of a new street that would be on the north side of this development and would exit onto Ritson Road. I don't know whether we can get that up on the screen, but it's just discernible on the eastern aspect of that slide that there is a street just to the north of that going eastbound and a little bit more to the south of that about mid-block. Typically, the reg- Typically, the region doesn't like to see new streets come on to a, a regional road and they don't like to see them come up in proximity to another road that doesn't form a straight through intersection. So how did that come about and what is the plan for signaled intersections, signalized crosswalks, cross rides? What's the plan for that area? Because it does seem to be rather congested in terms of streets coming on to Ritson Road.
Right. And through the chair, that was actually the subject of a pretty involved conversation with our, with our works colleagues in terms of finding that right point of entry. And the reason it's been provided in that location is that we want to avoid conflicting left turn movements with lefts going into eastbound at Saint Eloy. So we need to have enough queue space for left movements going into this site while also accommodating the southbound lefts going the other way without creating a stacking issue. So that was the recommendation in terms of the best location in terms of ensuring that there aren't traffic conflicts.
Okay, it's just a interesting conundrum and I'm, I'm glad we're, we've thought of that and we have a solution coming forward. I think at this point, that answers all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. So this project, it's gonna be strictly private developers, kinda?
Through the chair, the approach through the request for expression of interest is to either private or not-for-profit housing developers, and we wanna see what the level of interest is when we get back. We'll provide this information and material to a suite of eligible or/interested developers and subject to their interest will be in a better position to report back on what that level of interest is. But it's not strictly a private-for-profit approach.
That kinda lead into my next question. So if the interest isn't there, is there a Plan B for, for this site?
Well, through the chair, there would have to be a Plan B, but I think we would be quite surprised if there was no interest in a redevelopment opportunity that is being presented here. It's, I think it's more gauging the level of interest as, as opposed to whether or not there's any interest at all.
Okay. Through the chair, another, I didn't see it in the report and you didn't mention it. I understand that there is asbestos in the building. Is that correct?
Through the chair, there are a number of issues within the building and all remediation would need to occur as part of any improvement work.
So having said that, that would attribute, or maybe affordability would, that would be a factor depending on how much it would cost to get rid of that?
That is, that is a, I might suggest that is a smaller factor, but it is a factor. There are structural and other issues that would need to be addressed as well. There is a, a number of architectural, structural and other issues that need to be improved before the site is suitable for occupancy.
Okay. So in the, one, one last question, I believe, uh, Councilman Pietri referred to, so there are the buildings, so it may be more advantageous to do the other buildings first?
Oh, certainly. And that's, that, the recommendations speak to proceeding with the area identified as Block One behind the school building as the first step.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
So, members of council, that exhausts the questions on this item. We have a, a small technical problem with our online right now. The clerk has advised me, we need about thirty minutes to fix it. So I would suggest lunch is in the back, so a thirty-minute break for lunch moved by Councilor Chapman, seconded by Counselor Shahid. On a thirty-minute recess, make sure, members of council, that after you finish your lunch, you take your stuff back to the back room, please. All those in favor of the recess? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. We're in recess till, for the next thirty minutes. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Roll call starting now.
Councilor Kerr, Councilor Leahy, roll call. Councilor Neil? So we have quorum. Members of council, the next presentation, item four point four from Barb Goodwin, Commissioner of Corporate Services, and Chi Chang Chu, Director of Chief, Director and Chief Information Officer, and Micah Corporate Advisor on the Business Continuity, is a confidential report to committee of the whole. I need a motion to go into closed session, and the reason being is the security and property of the region of the corporation. Moved to go into close by Councilor Shahid, and her second, Councilor Mair and Pietri. On going into closed session, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, how much time do you need? One minute.
Members of council, thank you. Nobody left their seats, so we are back in session. In the interest of transparency, we went into closed session to receive an update on the security of property for the regional municipality. No motions or direction was given during that meeting, Madam Clerk. We're now moving on to item, there are no delegations, 6.1. I need a motion to refer this to consideration of a confidential report, 2024 Cal 34. Moved by Counselor Anderson, seconded by Counselor Yamada. On the, refer to the consideration of the report, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Counselor Chapman?
Yes, I would like to move 7.1 to 7.12.
Okay.
And Mayor Ash is willing to second it, yes.
So I'd second it. So, members of council, this is a consent agenda. I'm looking for polls. On, okay, polls. First, Mayor Schumer, item?
7.5 and 7.8, please.
Sorry, give me one second. 7.5 and 7.8. Mayor Foster?
You know, Mr. Chair, no, that's okay. I've got a number of questions, but they're not going to change my, my vote on anything. I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. So, members of council, so you're aware, 7.5, 7.8 have been polled. We have no other polls. I'll call the vote on the remainder. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Mayor Schumer, I need you to push your request to speak again. Mayor Schumer on 7.5?
Yes, thank you very much. And pardon me while I'm just pulling the document up again. I guess my question is specifically to the Commissioner of Finance with respect to the financing of this. Can I just get clarification again, as I'm trying to get through the report again here, on the amount that we have to determine how we will fund?
Okay, when you're ready, please.
Through the Chair. As indicated in the report, we are hopeful of receiving some senior-level funding and are pursuing that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to clarify, with any lack or reduced funding, what the region will be on the hook for?
I'll go to our CAO.
We continue to hope to get reimbursed through the federal government and did have some reimbursement for 2023 and anticipate some for the first quarter of 2024. We would also anticipate for the full year, but if that does not materialize, then I'm afraid this bill would fall to the region.
Okay. And, and of course, yeah, that's, that's in the report, and of course, it speaks again to funding those amounts at the discretion of the Commissioner of Finance. And, you know, we get into another one of these issues that, that we hear about at the end of the year, that we've, you know, had a, had a number of items come before us during the year unfunded, and, and we leave it to the fine Commissioner of Finance to, to find the money. And I guess my concern is, you know, what, what this will do if the, the federal or any other funding from other levels of government do not come through or don't come through to the amounts we, we anticipate or hope for. Do we have any idea where this is being funded? This is, this is the concern that gets constantly raised as we see these reports where we, we hand it over to the Commissioner of Finance to, to find the money.
Our CAO again, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We intentionally did not put a placeholder in the budget for this asylum seeker response, recognizing that it is a federal responsibility. Generally, the funding that we would receive is towards the end of the year, so we do have to technically front-end it. The Commissioner generally goes to a reserve fund to do that, but it would all be subject to us also reporting back to council. We've also got a recommendation in the, the report that says if we do not have confirmation of ongoing and permanent funding by the end of the year, that we would start to wind down this program for December 31st. The downside of that is that you are essentially putting individuals and families on the street, but we are trying to draw a line in the sand to encourage proper federal support of this program.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I, I understand that, but I just, I don't see that happening, just with history being, being what it is. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Carter.
Just for clarification, whose direct responsibility is, is this?
Our CAO.
I appreciate that.
I would say it is a, it is a shared responsibility. Generally, the federal government would be responsible for settlement costs, and as I said, we are working with them on another number of avenues to get that covered. With respect to direct service delivery, it does often fall to municipalities because we're closest to the people, but we do anticipate and require federal support. There is also a role for the provincial government, but that has not really, from my perspective, been clearly defined. I'm going to look at Jonathan from Social Services in case there's anything he would add to that.
When you're ready, go ahead, please. Thank you. So, yeah, IRCC, the, the federal government branch, the asylum branch, has been in contact with us, and we've been communicating with them over the past year and a bit, just around whose responsibility for the funding as well. They've been quite open to us around, and, and, you know, receiving our expenditures and having ongoing conversations, but they're very slow in responding, obviously, and I think that's where we're seeing a lot of the gap in, in funding. What we're really looking for is more of an allocation for the municipality that we can work with as opposed to expenditure-based, which puts, puts pressure on our net tax levy.
So, Mr. Chair, just a couple more follow-ups, if you don't mind. What if there's a change in the government?
There would be further delays at the very least, and we would, we would have to, we would obviously continue our advocacy if we continue to have to deal with a refugee or asylum seeker crisis. But yes, we are at the mercy of whatever policy the government in power puts in place.
So, I know that this is a humanitarian, humanitarian aspect of it, and that's how we approach it as a region of Durham. And, and I'm sympathetic to the, towards that. But my question back, back through the chair to our CAO, and maybe this is a political question, but is it humanitarian that we have individuals that are fleeing, you know, circumstances where we are incapable of caring for them and victimizing them once again? And does the federal government understand that the decisions that they're making is doing exactly that?
I can't comment on that, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I'm sure they're aware of the situation.
I just, I guess, I guess the issue being is, and I was shocked, and I'll be very honest with you, Mr. Chair, I was in Toronto for an event that you and I were at, and we went by one of the centers. And I was shocked because the reason that the individuals are just basically standing there with suitcases. And, you know, I think municipalities and regions are trying to do everything they possibly can, but again, as it seems like this, this domino, reverse domino effect from the federal government downward, that it ends up on the regional or municipal levels. I guess my last question is, are we able to say, unless we have a funding agreement in place, that the refugee program will not be available in the region of Durham? So therefore, we, we would expect funding first before services would be committed to?
That would be a council position. We have recommended putting the federal government on notice that, you know, as of December 31st, we will no longer be putting regional dollars to this. There is a proposal that Peel has coordinated across municipalities that we're all trying to get behind support and advocate for, which would allow for an allocation per asylum seeker, not only to the individual or family, but also to the municipality that's serving them. I can't say it's getting a whole lot of traction, but I can tell you that all of the GTHA, single tier and regions are behind it.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and to the CAO for the feedback. I greatly appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Shahid?
Thank you. Through you, Chair Henry. Just a couple of questions. The allocation of 9.9, a maximum of 9.9 million, has been allocated for until December 31st, 2024. And in page five, I believe there is a line item which says the fact that to this date, we've applied for 7 million in federal funding. That means we are still short of 3 million from last year? Is that what it means?
Yep. Through the Chair. So, total spend for asylum and refugees for the region to this date has been almost 11.2 million dollars. That includes Ukrainians as well, early in the response. Also, there is a contribution amount that's required for IHAP, which is the interim housing assistance program, that the region would have to contribute. And there's some costs that wouldn't be eligible. So, we applied for 4.9 million dollars for 2023 costs and received 4.6. 2.6 additionally were some costs associated with Ukraine, which were not eligible for under IHAP. And then there's some regional costs for some Ontario Work staff that were also included. So, there's a bit of a gap there of about over a million dollars, I think, for the region that needed to be funded from tax levy, unfortunately.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. The Peel model CAO had mentioned, and, and I, and I believe you're saying that it is received support from other levels of government. So, at some point, is there something that we can read about?
Yes, we can certainly share that proposal. It has been supported at the municipal level, whether local or regional, depending on the structure. Peel has been liaising federally and will continue to do that. I think through groups like the regional and single-tier CAOs, we will try to put extra strength behind that advocacy.
Thank you. And lastly, just wanted to understand the fact that if we let go of this on December 31st, this is just a tool to encourage the federal government to see the importance of it. What happens? We just send back the people that we're getting?
We would have to wind down the program gradually, because ultimately, ultimately what will happen is, as individuals leave our hotel program, which is where most of the asylum seekers are, we would not fill that room. And ideally, by the end of the year, we would have no more asylum seekers in hotels. It would mean they'd either be without accommodation, or we'd have to go elsewhere in the GTA or beyond to find accommodation.
Okay. And what is the uptake of it? How many do you get per week or per month?
There is some details in the, in the report that talks about inflow and outflow as well that we have going until, I think, around March. But we are currently supporting over 400 asylum seekers in Durham.
3.5 says that. Yeah, okay. So, we don't have a data of how much we get an average per month or per week. It's just 400 at this point?
We could get that information for you. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. That'll be all, Chair.
Mayor Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the, you know, the, the concept that we would turn people away, leave refugees and families on the streets, goes against, I imagine, the, the moral and ethical fiber of, of each one of us in this room. But we do need to make a strong statement to the federal government. You, you had suggested, I heard suggested, that Peel's proposal is not getting a lot of traction. Is, is there a way of, of getting out to the press on behalf of, you know, all of the GTA municipalities and raising this? This, this should be a front-page story. We, as you and I had chatted the other day, we, we have a huge number of unsheltered that we can't deal with, and then compounded with refugees that, that need help. But is, is there, is there not a way of calling in favors, highlighting this to? But is, is there, is there not a way of calling in favors, highlighting this to the press? I, I would think that this would get a tremendous amount of traction, that were people to be educated on it.
That is something that I can raise at the next meeting of the region and single-tiered CAOs, which is taking place next week, I believe, next Friday. I think if we were to go public with the Peel proposal, we'd certainly need everybody on board before we did that. I don't foresee an issue, but I would be happy to raise that next week.
Well, like, you know, and I, you know, I would suggest that the chairs be made available for anyone that wants to interview them, but we, we all know different reporters that if we highlight things, they will probably come out and, and do a story. But this, this, this is a big deal. It's a huge thing. And again, I, I think if the public understood what was going on, that may be a way more effective way of, of putting pressure on the feds to, to, to respond in an appropriate fashion. And, and for all of the work done on this thing, you, it's, it's not easy, and it's, it's sure not fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lee.
Counselor Lee.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon. I just want to thank the CAO for pointing out that ultimately, at the end of the day, this is very much a joint problem. Yes, federally, you know, they're in charge of foreign affairs and the, the money associated with migrants and refugees, but, you know, once they choose Durham region as their location to settle, then they become our responsibility. They are Durham region residents for all intents and purposes. And so I think it's, it's a key point of putting out of, we should stop othering individuals as like, oh, they're like, you know, they're residents, and so we have to take care of residents. I'm obviously, you know, Mayor Foster, you know, speaking of compassion, and ultimately, I'm incredibly uncomfortable with winding down this program at the end of the year because we're just pushing the problem now from, you know, a migrant refugee issue to just a homelessness issue, which we already have a big problem with. So, let's not fool ourselves, you know, as long as there is any sort of war or conflict internationally, then we are going to see refugees and/or migrants. And that's based on our commitment to the United Nations of allowing them to come into our country. You know, we are, I think countless racialized individuals, my parents and other generation of that generation, were probably refugees or, you know, came from war-torn countries and were able to settle here. So I just want to, I understand, and you know, the chair's made countless points of we need help from the federal government, but I just want to make sure we don't start engaging in language that others, these people, once they are here in Durham region, whether it's Pickering, Ajax, it doesn't matter, you are now a Durham region resident, and we'll treat you as such. And, you know, hopefully provide you a humane way of settling and becoming a full-blown citizen down the line. But yeah, so, I mean, this program is helpful for the 400-plus that have used it, I'm sure. And yes, I understand the financial crisis, you know. I had a resident come to the finance department and explain very passionately about why his property taxes were too high, and I feel for that. But, you know, we, as in the region, take care of our own, and we've always done that, and I've always been very proud of that, and I hope that continues. So that's, that's it. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to request a division. The action, Section I, be voted on separately from the remainder of the sections.
Okay. So, division, so you need a secondary on division. Second by Counselor Leahy. We'll call the vote on division. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, so on the vote, we will separate out I.
Thank you. I share the comments of the previous speaker. I'm really uncomfortable with this game of chicken that we're playing here because we're not the victims, and the federal government is not the victims. We're using those who are asylum seekers, those are refugees, as almost a token going back and forth, so we can point fingers at each other as government levels. I totally understand the concerns financially. I totally understand that we need to press the government, the federal level, to contribute more, and I wholeheartedly support coordinating with our municipal partners and anybody who will listen, that the federal government needs to step up. That's not my issue. My issue is, we use the words, you know, wind down operations, but we're talking about cutting off support to men, women, and children. These are not just numbers on a piece of paper. These are not just statistics that we, we collect. These are individuals, and in some cases, individuals who barely got out of their home countries with their lives because they were repressed or attacked by their own governments. And they come here seeking aid and, and security, and hopefully a better future. With respect, you know, to all the disputes we have with the federal government, I don't want to copy the attitude of those who drove these people from their countries. They saw them simply as expendable. And I'll tell you, my family went through this. 1965, my family were economic refugees from Scotland. And in that year, almost 500,000 Scots came to Canada, Australia, US, and others because the government of the day said they were expendable and told them to get out. And you can go through most European countries in that timeframe, and you can see that same pattern evolved. So this is not new. This is not a new situation. You know, and therefore, our response can't be new. I'm here because the government of the day here in Ontario welcomed my family, helped us get a job, and we became productive Canadian citizens that helped build this economy, and we're willing to step up. I am, anyway, willing to step up and do my share for those that come behind me. We have to be clear in what our mandate is as a council. We don't segregate people for support into categories, whether they're immigrants, whether they're refugees, whether they're asylum seekers, whether they were born here or they moved here. We don't have one set of rules for one group of people and one set of rules for a different group of people. And my fear is Part L seems to indicate that. Not shutting down every other program that the province and the federal government is underfunded, just this one. And I think that comes a point where we say, is this really the message we want to send on behalf of Durham region? In my opinion, respectfully, I don't think it is. I don't think it's the right message to send. I think we should press the federal government, if they're anything in our toolbox, and embarrass them all the heck of how they're treating people. But if they're abusing people who are refugees, let's not join their side. Let's not do it to them as well. Let's embarrass the federal government about what they're doing or not doing. Let's not copy their plan. So, I will be voting against L, Mr. Chairman.
It's actually I.
I, sorry, I, you're correct.
No problem.
Glasses are gone. And would ask for a recorded vote on that section.
Okay. Recorded vote on Item I. Counselor Kerr.
Thank you, Chair. When I was a professor at Durham College for 30 years, 19 of those years were spent teaching in the School of Justice. And I taught a course in human rights and diversity, which included a section on immigration. And what's being missed in this discussion so far is that since 1953 in this country, the federal government admitted 225,000 immigrants every year and 50,000, up to 50,000 refugees. Now recently, the federal government has increased that to 500,000 immigrants, and I don't know what the number of refugees are, but all of that funding responsibility in that program was the responsibility of the federal government. So the federal government, it seems to me, is willing to be humanitarian, admittedly, and admit a far greater number of refugees than 50,000. They must be prepared to step up and fund that like they have done since 1953. And to download those costs onto municipal governments, including regional governments, is, I could say reprehensible, but I think it's better to say an abrogation of their responsibilities. And if we continue to fund this, they will very gladly say, carry on, Canada, go ahead and fund it. So this is where the dichotomy is, this is where the conundrum is. Where do you stop being humanitarian and start being practical for your taxpayers and your residents? And where do you stop accepting the burden of, financial burden of responsibility that ought to be rightfully placed on the federal government? It's their program. So that's where I'm conflicted on this. I completely understand the arguments presented that, how can we turn these people away? I don't think anybody wants to do that. But I think somewhere, sometime, the federal government has to acknowledge that this is their responsibility. They have a lot more tax dollars than we do, and they have a program that's meant to deal with this. And that's what they should be reminded of, of their responsibility. I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on this. This is a tough one, but I can completely understand why we need to forcefully and vehemently remind the government of their financial obligation in the refugee program. Thank you.
Mayor Bart.
Hey, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm going to agree with Counselor Kerr on this. This is, this is something that is not the direct responsibility of municipal taxpayers. And we have 202 days to be talking to the federal government to make sure that this is looked after. Let's keep this in this report, it was written by staff, and work on it for the next 202 days, and then this council can make a decision whether or not we, we cut back on this program or we, we keep it intact. But we have lots of time to do this. Let's keep this on the books and keep doing our jobs, which is, you know, encouraging the feds to do what they should be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Leahy.
Thank you, Chair. So, no, and I, again, I appreciate the sentiment. I think what we need to focus on is pressuring the government to pay for that. The challenge I have is that I just, I can't support shutting down a program that's going to be helping people that are coming into this country. They're basically going to come into Durham, they're going to walk up, look for a place to stay, and then we're going to have to explain to them, we, thanks for coming to Durham, but you know what? The federal government isn't going to give us the checks. We can't put you in a motel this at the moment, so, sorry, keep going down the road. Like, it just, it seems like not the best response, but I understand the sentiment. We should be focusing on pushing the feds to pay for that program, and if they don't, we're going to have to pay for it. And that's just part of the reality, unfortunately, because we can't, these people are coming to this country, and we have to take care of it. And then they're residents of Durham, if they're here, and we need to take care of them, and that's, that's the number one thing for me. So I would, there's no way I could ever support ending the program. 100%, I'm comfortable with lobbying the government, pushing the government, advocating, doing everything we can to get them to pay for this increase that they're constantly dumping on local residents. What we really should be pushing for is, and which we are doing through AMO, is more sustainable funding, not on the property tax base. Look at other OECD countries where we have access to consumption tax and extra points on taxes so that we have other sources of revenue that's not so reliant on property taxes. To me, those are the things that we can continue to advocate and push for, but to try and have the threat to say, if you don't give this money, we're going to shut down this program, we're not going to take care of people that come into Durham, just, I think sends the wrong message, and I don't think I could ever support. So I certainly won't be supporting Item I. Thank you.
Counselor Shahid.
Thank you so much. Through you, Chair. Henry, to this date, how much tax dollars have been reserved or been used for this program? Do we know?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
No problem. How much tax dollars to this date or percentage of our tax dollars have been used municipally on this program? So if we've recovered, let's just say, we, we have just spent about a million dollars?
There's only one conversation in this room, members of council, and that is Counselor Shahid. Counselor Shahid, I'm sorry for the interruption. Please continue.
Thank you so much. Through you, Chair. It looks like when I was talking about these numbers before, it's just about a million-dollar worth of a gap that we are, we have not been returned.
Yeah, it's over 1.2 million that we're anticipating would not be reimbursable, plus the 2.6 associated with Ukraine.
I see. And so it's a total of 3.6 million. And then, in terms of percentage, how much of it is on our tax?
So, Counselor, it's $9.9 million to get us to the end of the year. Every one percentage point is $8 million.
Sounds good. All right. So, i- in this case, is it a possibility that we defer this report for another 90 days or something and then come back?
I'll have our CAO respond.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. It's, it's a valid question, but unfortunately, we cannot recommend that. Our services are provided through an agency, and that agency needs some certainty with respect to cash so that it can keep its staff employed and servicing the refugees and maintain the, the hotel program. So this is really, the, the first objective of this report is to allow us to continue past the end of June.
Thank you. So the scenario here, Chair Henry, is the fact that most of us will not be able to support the fact that we just not welcome people in Durham, because we are welcoming in, in nature. So how do we deal with sending a strong message to the federal government while also be compassionate? So how do we do that? I think deferring is the best way. In my opinion, that way, members of council are not divided here because we are still compassionate. We, we don't want to go out of that realm of stuff. So I need direction into how we can resolve this with not, I, I do not think we should be doing a recorded vote on this. This is not fair on my members of council here. We are compassionate community. Deferring would be the best. I will leave it there. I've said my piece. Thank you.
So, Counselor, a recorded vote can be called at any given time on any item?
But on this matter, it's dividing us.
No cross-debate.
I know, but I'm just, I've said my piece. Thank you.
Okay. On the other item, I'll have the CAO respond.
I'm afraid deferring would be a bigger problem because, as I believe it, by the end of June, there will be no more money going to CDCD, which is the organization that provides the service for us, so they'd have to shut down the program. We've structured the report in such a way that if we hit the wall, we're able to shut down the program incrementally by the end of the year, but CDCD needs to know that it will have the resources to maintain its staffing and maintain the motel program, at least for the next three to six months.
Through you, Chair Henry. Would deferring it until council will help make any better decisions? No. Okay. It is what it is.
Counselor Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, what we're talking about here is the asylum seekers program, and that staff be directed to wind down that program, which we are funding to CDC, to run that program. We're not turning anybody away. And if we don't get the funding from the federal government and that program starts, nobody in this room, I think, is saying, we're not going to look after anybody. Men, women, and children, they're just going to be on the street, and we're going to drive right past them. We're not going to do anything other than provide shelters, right? In the winter, we have motel programs, we have PCOP, the MCOP, we have the outreach program. We're going to look after them because they're in Durham region. This is the program, and this is a message that has to be sent to the federal government. We're going to shut down this program for asylum seekers. So listen, federal government, if you're sending more asylum seekers here, we have no program for them. It doesn't mean we're saying, people, stay out of Durham region. I agree with what Professor Kerr said earlier. I mean, this is a very hard, hard decision, and we're not going to turn people away. We can't turn people away from coming here, but from the program itself, the asylum seeker program, that's what this is about here. The other thing I want to remind the rest of council that, yes, we're all compassionate. Think about that when you spend the money and the tax rate is up, when you're all complaining that the tax rate is too high because what did we do, and you're trying to cut out other essential services, right? Services for the people that are paying taxes. We're not leaving anybody on the street. We're not leaving anybody behind by sending this message. And I think we need to send that message by saying, we're going to stop this asylum seekers program. Doesn't say we're going to stop looking after people that come to Durham that are, are vulnerable in the fact that they don't have housing or they don't have food or all those things, because how many people do we have in Durham now that fit into that category that are not asylum seekers, that have been here perhaps all their life? Thank you.
So, Madam CEO, just for clarification, that anyone in the system as of December 31st will not be put out on the street. This is just about not accepting any more asylum seekers.
We would try to wind down the program in such a way that as a hotel room was vacated, because an individual or family managed to get permanent housing, we would not refill that room. So we'd wind it down gradually, and the hope would be that if we were to end it on December 31st, we would have the, the individuals in the system housed by that time, and we would not have added any additional individuals to the program. We would likely have to start winding down, I would think, in September.
Thank you. Counselor Crawford, or, sorry, Counselor Crawford, before I push the button, I had deleted Mayor Foster, and he's back in, so I will go to Mayor Foster first.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've, I've never been deleted before, but who knows what's in the future? So I, I may need, I may need some clarity on, on a couple of things. Our CAO was suggesting that we would have to start winding down, probably in September. So if, if we do this, and, and I agree fully that we need to, we need to send a very strong message to the federal government, I think we may have tipped our hand with this conversation already. But, so what does that look like? The refugees are still coming here, but the program doesn't exist. So does, does that not mean that, that people are on the street?
The, the individuals that we currently have in the program, which do turn over, we would try to ensure that they were housed without filling the hotel rooms that they vacate. Generally, what would happen is that the individuals would go elsewhere in the GTA. We are, we do work across geographic boundaries to find spaces wherever we can in the GTA, but we would really be putting the pressure back on our neighboring regions and local tiers.
So, so we're, a guy by the name of John Foster, who might have come here as a displaced person, rather than coming to Durham, if there's a program in York, he would go to York?
Yes, that's correct. And Peel is in the process, pending federal funding of opening up a reception center, and part of the purpose of that would be to triage across the GTA. But again, tied to that is operating money that's required for the, the reception center, and operating dollars required to go not only to the asylum seekers, but also to the municipalities providing them service. So that's part of what we're calling the Peel proposal.
Yeah, so I, so I appreciate the Peel proposal, and it would reiterate, I really think we need to highlight that and, and get a significant amount of press to, to push that forward on the federal government. But my concern is, as, as we wind down our program, so December, or January 1st, someone shows up in town, if they come here as opposed to York, there is, there is nothing for them. They potentially become yet another unsheltered individual here in Durham, and we are now pushing our problems to Toronto, York, Peel, and Halton. Is, is, have I got that right?
Yes, essentially, individuals and families are always welcome to try to access our shelter system, but that tends to be at capacity.
So, and, and the, the other concern, and, and my ignorance may once again shine through very clearly, refugees come, we, and we, we put them into hotels, and this is not an anti-refugee or an anti-immigration statement. Counselor Shahid was correct in a number of things that she said. I would opine that that's why she should be sitting at FCM. But the, there, there is a distinction between the services available to, to the unsheltered, I'm, I'm going to call them our homegrown unsheltered as to, as opposed to refugees under, under this program, is there not?
Yes, there is a difference. The unsheltered are generally considered Durham residents. The refugee population needs settlement services to get settled. Much of those services are funded federally, and that's part of the discussion that we're trying to have with the feds. But it's a different set of services. I, I have to say, IRCC staff federally have come to Durham several times to help process asylum seekers. So at the staff level, it is working well, but it's at the financial level that I think everybody is asking for some kind of formal, permanent commitment to funding.
Yeah, and, you know, and again, I appreciate, I'm going to make it some flip, a couple of million dollars, I, you know, in, in people's lives, but my, my impression, and again, please educate me, my impression is that a, a refugee, and, and I've got to emphasize, you know, we can come back to all kinds of reasons why we need to welcome refugees. A refugee that comes here probably has more opportunity than, than a Durham region, a Durham resident who is, is unsheltered. And is that impression wrong? Please tell me if it is.
I think it is. I think it varies by individuals. A lot of the individuals that are coming here are escaping war and trauma, so they have a lot of recovery to do as well.
Yeah, and not, not, so, so that, that's actually not, not where, not where I was going with that, and not the question. So I, I'll, I'll see what Counselor Crawford has to say. I'm, I'm equally torn on this. I, if, if we're not making a, a firm statement, we need a plan B to make that firm statement. I'm not so worried about the, the money on this that is going in. We all have stories, in some cases, personal stories, of refugees, so my, my dad's case, and I guess you'd call him a, an economic refugee, but he was considered a displaced person after World War II, and we know so, so many more. My, my fear is the, that we are taking resources from one side, that should be the responsibility of the federal government, which is impeding our ability to deal with the unsheltered, which is an increasing problem. So it's, quite simply, and I think for all of us, a matter of resourcing, and again, I, I agree with Counselor Shahid that we are all deeply concerned about this, just torn as to how we might force the federal government to the table. So I, I don't think a vote one way or the other on this should be mistaken for people that are not supportive of, of refugees. I think we are all highly supportive. Mr. Chair, thank you.
I'll have our CAO respond.
I just wanted to comment on one thing through you, Mr. Chair. We are not taking away any of the resources that are earmarked for our homeless or precariously housed present population and moving it to refugees. That's why we keep getting reports like this to come out of reserve funds. We've been quite adamant that we are not going to erode the resources we need to deal with our unsheltered population.
And, and Mr. Chair was not suggesting that we were. It's, it's a fear for sustainability into the future, and the, so, you know, the, the sensitivity that we are hearing, the proper sensitivity in the responses speaks to how difficult this, this issue is. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to know, most asylum seekers and refugees are still landing in Ajax?
Yes.
Yes. So what happens then, when this program ends? I cannot, we cannot survive having this just turn into another level of governments' problem that are not funding it. We already are spending over $500,000 in encampment cleanup, and we are not getting reimbursed for that. I, I can't have this shift happen in our town. It's not right. So this is where they're landing, this is where they're staying. I realize they're being put all through Durham region, but I understand there's only one tax dollar. But if that tax dollar then ends up shifting into Ajax's tax bracket, we will not stand for it. It can't. It can't happen. We cannot, we can't sustain it. And will there be a review of the status of funding and the number of individuals in the program prior to December 31st, and then after the funding is stopped?
Yes, there will be. Thank you.
So that exhausts the speaker list. May I put a suggestion on the floor, that item I should be referred back to staff to report back into September, after we see what happens with what the work that Peel is doing? I'll just put it out there. Counselor Neal?
Make that motion. If I get a second?
Second, moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Shahid. That item I be referred back to staff to report to council in September on the ongoing work that is going on with the Peel Welcoming Center. So I'm going to have Counselor Nicholson on the referral.
Thank you. I think this is just dancing around the head of a pin here. Either you're in favor of shutting down the program as a threat to the feds, or you're not. Simply referring this off to September, so we have the debate in September, we go through this all again, I'm not going to support it whether it's September, October, November, December, January, any day of the year. I'm not going to become the bully boy that goes out there and says to people that are in need, "Sorry, we have no room at the inn." Remember that being used about 2,000 years ago, there was no room at the inn. It's just not how I was raised, it's just not my ethics. If someone is hungry, if somebody needs shelter, we don't turn you away and send you down the road. And I, I warn councilors very sincerely here, if we act like this, what stops Peel in York and Toronto and other neighborhoods, doing the exact same thing in reverse? What stops the state of Toronto saying, "Well, as they've done in other types and groups, we'll just put them on a bus and send them to Durham," and that'd be Durham's problem? And the part we're missing here is, if we don't have this program, with some federal funding, maybe, definitely not enough, with some, then when they try to make use of our shelter program, and our social services program, and our support services, we're going to pay even more. Because I, I don't believe our staff is going to simply walk away. They're going to step in and use other programs that are fully funded by Durham taxpayers. You know, pressure, absolutely. Embarrass the federal government? You got my vote, 110% support. Beating up refugees and asylum seekers because we're mad at the federal government? I'm not on for that any day of the year.
Yeah. Counselor dies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the discussion. I know we're all very, very frustrated. But I think, you know, your, your last amendment or your direction is maybe a, a good one, in that it gives us time to work with the community on this, because community, or CDCD is our, you know, it's community development, it's about social development in our communities, it's a social development council. They have a lot of partners who are helping us with the refugees and with the homeless. And maybe it's about time, yes, we have to let the government know at some point, and we still do, that we have an issue with this non-funding aspect, but I think we, we need to look beyond more support with maybe our partners in the not-for-profit sector to also put pressure on them as well, and see if we can not get somewhere with that. We know that having, of course, no funding is going to be very problematic, but I think we need to give it a shot before we, we say no.
Thank you. Counselor Chapman.
What she said. I, I, I support the referral, because I'm assuming, Madam CEO, that we're anticipating, or at least hoping, that we'll have some response from the federal government as to where we're going, where they're going with it, and it'll make the decision, if, if the federal government says, "No, we're not providing it," the choice is still to, to counselors to say, "We're going to shut it down." If they provide, if they come back and say, "We're going to provide it," then it becomes a moot point. So I think referring it back to staff at this time, and I'm sure, I have every confidence in the CAO and the staff in the social services area, that they're going to do, listening to everything that we've said here, this aft, it's afternoon, yeah, right, this afternoon, that there's going to be more of a push on, and they're going to also deal with the counterparts of other municipalities, regions that are facing similar issues. So I think the way to go is, pretty good move on your part suggesting that, Mr. Chair, I'll agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Yvonne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to staff, so I, I understand that we've employed a private sector lobbying firm to do work on behalf of the region, if memory serves me correct, it was Strategy Corp. How many meetings have we had with the federal government on this issue? And what has sort of been the discussion with Strategy Corp? Because if we're employing a, a private sector lobbying firm, I, I would hope that we'd be fighting on some of these issues that are costing Durham taxpayers money.
Strategy Corp has not been fully engaged in the refugee issue, but I can tell you that I was on an advisory panel with the Deputy Minister of IRCC, which probably met four times, and I believe Mr. Dixon is now working directly with them. They've also attended various meetings of the regional single-tier CAOs. So I would say we've probably, since last June, maybe eight to 10 meetings.
And within those meetings, has it been communicated to them that we might be withdrawing funding?
We have not yet communicated that we may end the program at the end of the year, but we have very definitely communicated strongly that we need federal support for the costs that we're incurring.
So then, would we not start, you, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, to staff, so then would we start using Strategy Corp to advance our new position?
We can certainly do that, yes.
All right. Thank you. I, I'm a supporter of deferring this. I would hope that using Strategy Corp can be, I don't think it needs to be added into any amendment, we could take that as a, a staff direction, but it is truly disappointing and a, a failure of the federal government to really download these kind of programs that are federal programs onto the tax base. Property tax is being stretched so far, when you have the provincial government making changes to the regime here in Ontario, and the further costs that we see to not punch back to the federal government and say, "It's time you start taking responsibility for the decisions that you're making and how that impacts the local municipalities." I think it's about time we do that, but I'm willing to see what fruits come out of this referral, and hopefully we'll see some action from this federal government. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Shahid.
I believe it's Mayor Dan Carter before me, but I'm happy to speak as well, or maybe not. I, thank you for the motion for the deferral. This is common sense, I think, a middle ground approach. I think my colleagues would be very relieved not to vote on that, for now, not that we're pushing our troubles away. The one point that I wanted to raise was the fact that I'd like to see, Peel is one model, but maybe there is other communities like Halton or others that are having the same pressures. If CAO can talk to our counterparts and perhaps see what, what other models that others are using in terms of funding, I would love to see what's happening out there, because, I mean, this is not just an Ontario problem, it's an entire Canada problem, so I would love to see more. I've said my piece, and I appreciate the middle ground approach. Chair.
Thank you. Mayor Carter.
Just a question through you, Mr. Chair. To your recollection or the CAO's recollection, have we ever taken this type of position with either the provincial or federal government in regards to any type of, because we've been squeezed by both, both fairly, provincial and federal governments. Have we taken this approach before?
I don't think we have. I'm, I'm going to say, I, I don't remember, and I'm getting a, a shake of the head from the CAO, no.
Okay. No, I just, you know, because there's a whole bunch of issues that I think that we could actually take that, so I, I just...
But, you know, it, we have conveyed the fact to the other levels of government that the continued downloading on municipalities for items that are our responsibilities will eventually bankrupt some of the smaller municipalities. That's been conveyed.
I'm wondering if our CAO, through your CAO conversations, if this referral moves forward, and that maybe this is a, a subject matter that could be undertaken by the CAOs to say, you know, we're, all municipalities are getting squeezed pretty hard by the provincial and federal government. At what point do we have to be able to say that we're no longer able to provide these services because of the economic pressures on our ratepayers, and that we don't have the resources to properly support them? And I'm just, I'm not, I'm just throwing it out there, it might be worth a conversation, because I think what's, what's happening is, I think, ratepayers are getting more and more questionable about, you know, we heard it, matter of fact, at finance yesterday, you had a delegation talk about the tax rate and the unaffordability. I think he was trying to be complimentary, but also asking for accountability, and we're trying to do all the right things at the expense of the federal and provincial government of the federal and provincial government decisions, and at some point, we're going to have to have a decision in regards to, unfortunately, as much as we're compassionate, kind, and generous, we just don't have the resources to be able to do so, so take that under advice. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
The CAO has taken a disdirection. Counselor Wu.
Yeah, good afternoon, and my apologies, I've been having technical difficulties, but certainly a good COW meeting. Now, I wanted to, looking at, and references has been made to the Peel approach, or sustainable person-centered approach, and now they speak about, and if the CAO could speak to the report, per asylum, they're looking at about $70,000 per asylum, is that about what we are looking at per asylum that is staying here? And again, I would imagine that would include the services such as the shelters, and, well, if I can say, everything that would be there to support asylum seekers, and I would imagine that's even food and shelter and everything else like that.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Counselor, we are speaking on the referral of item I.
Okay, well, I would certainly want to take a look at, as Counselor Shahid did say, are there other areas besides Peel that we could look at, but certainly, the other one is pressing the federal government, that there is a cost, and that's why I bring up that amount, there is a cost. You look at 70,000 per asylum seekers, in some respects, you might as well give them the money and say, "Here, you could, you could probably put a good down payment on a house." Well, maybe not, but, you know, what we talked about earlier with Malaga or somewhere like that.
Counselor, it's-
But I'll leave it at that, sorry.
Thank you. So, members of council, that exhausts the speaker's list on all items but I, because I has got a recorded vote on. Madam Clerk, I'm going to call the vote on all items but I. We're going to deal with the refer before we deal with the other ones? Ah, I apologize, it's been a long day. A recorded vote on item I was called, so we'll vote on the referral.
With the vote on the referral, the recorded vote was for I on its own, it wasn't on the refer?
Sorry.
If you want a recorded vote for the referral, we can do that.
Well, if we, because if it's referred, then it's gone.
Yeah, but we can do a recorded vote on the referral.
So, well, I'll call for the recorded vote on the referral, that makes it just easier. Yes. This, we're voting only on I, it's a recorded vote on the referral to staff to come back in September. Okay.
Madam Clerk.
The vote's now open.
The secondary of the referral wasn't in their seat. Okay, members of council, we have a problem, because when I called the vote, the secondary of the vote wasn't in their chair.
I'm so sorry, I'm not able to connect words with you.
No, I understand, but I called for a referral, so technically, we don't have a secondary. So, seconded by Counselor Leahy, okay? And the vote still stands, okay? Well, Counselor Shahid didn't vote, if, counsel, okay, Counselor Nicholson has called for me to call the recorded vote again. Okay.
The vote is now open.
So, on the referral of item I to staff carries, on the remainder, A3 through to J excluding I, we'll call the vote, all those in favor, record a vote, but called by Counselor Nicholson. Madam Clerk, it's A through J excluding I.
The vote is now open.
Okay, that carries. Madam Clerk, just give me one second. Okay. We're now on to, Madam Clerk, item 7.8 on page 515? No, 685? And it's Counselor, or Mayor Schumer, could you please push your button? Thank you, go ahead, Mayor Schumer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, hopefully I won't stir up a mess on this one, but the asset management plan as it is currently presented to us, just, I'd like to get some confirmation on, well, next steps, what's expected, because, you know, this is, asset management's been a, been a, well, a block of cement around the neck of many municipalities, and as recognized in the report, we still have, obviously, a significant gap. Can I just get clarification on the degree of specific measures to address that that are required or will be required?
I'll go to Ms. Pinkel, please.
Thank you, through you, Chair, to Mayor Schumer, so thanks for the question. So there's a couple of avenues that this report will facilitate in terms of next steps. First of all, it's a very, asset management is very integrated into our business planning and budget cycles, so certainly, the results from this report before you today will be deliberated on and incorporated into our 2025 capital budget and nine-year forecast. Also, the preliminary results were reflected in our 2024 budget and nine-year forecast. In addition to that, the next legislative requirement from the province with respect to asset management that comes into effect July 1st of 2025 is for the development of a financial plan to, to provide the financial framework to support ongoing investment in asset management in order to achieve the level of service standards that are set through that asset management planning process. So certainly, over the course of the next 12 months, that's a major focus of our efforts here at the region and across the sector with other municipalities in terms of developing those financing strategies to address those gaps that are identified through this process.
Okay, so I, yeah, I believe you answered my question there, and it was to clarify, so we've got that kind of coming in the next 12 months, where we will actually have to come up with a financial plan to deal with that gap, that's correct.
Go ahead, please.
Through the Chair, yes, that is correct, and what I will say is, the development of the financial strategy is multifaceted, so it's certainly, over the long term, ensuring there's sustainable investments to meet our service objectives with respect to those assets. The other factor that we consider in building that financial framework is also looking again at our levels of service standards and making sure that those, and validating those levels of service standard to make sure that they are the best fit for the municipality going back, going forward. So essentially, you can address the gap from a funding perspective, but also from an expenditure perspective, so it's twofold, and certainly, that's the exercise we'll be going over, over the course of the next 12 months.
Okay, and just to clarify as well, the nightmarish property tax, you know, increases that we were discussing earlier this year, and we've been informed, will be forthcoming for who knows how many more years, those did not include these financial measures to deal with that gap, so anything that we come up with will be in addition to those already existing pressures.
Through you, Chair, to Mayor Schumer in the question, so certainly, on our core infrastructure, so as you've noted in this report, we identified the current infrastructure gap for our core services, which is water, sewer, and transportation, the majority of that gap right now is on the water and sewer side, and, and then again, it grows over the 10-year forecast, so certainly, the 2024 capital budgets and nine-year forecasts certainly did contemplate significant investment in asset management and addressing, sort of advancing a lot of the capital works over the early part of the 10-year forecast to address this, so some of that is already incorporated in, but there is still some more work to do, and I would say it would be felt, obviously, on the property tax side, but more so on the user rate side.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so I believe that the, the only chart, it might be one of two, that shows the replacement value of assets is in very poor condition, 100%, that's 1.2. I also note that this is page 666 of the agenda, should we be really afraid? And I'll leave it at that, I'm not sure I want the answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, that exhausts the speaker's list, so I'll just call the vote on the item, all those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Confidential matters, do you want to do a consent agenda? So, members of council, I'm going to try, with your, with your support, I'm going to do a, try to do a consent agenda on confidential matters, I'm going to go to Counselor Chapman.
Yeah, I'm going to move all the confidential matters.
Okay, thank you, I'm looking for a secondary. Seconded by Counselor Brenner. Okay, so all three items are moved, polls. Counselor Kerr? Sorry, oh, sorry, Mayor Carter's first on the speaker's list, Mayor Carter, poll?
Just want a recorded vote on 2024 COW 34, please.
Record a vote only on this one, so, okay. So, we'll pull that one for the recorded vote. Counselor Kerr?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I lost my agenda access here, it's the item to do with the Metrolinks Bridge item, and I'm wondering if that's what, I'd like to pull that, to say something?
Are you talking about the, that would be 30, COW 34?
It could be, but I've lost my agenda, I can't think of the number.
It was called for a recorded vote, so you'd like to speak to it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we, recognizing the recorded vote, there is a need to pull, so, Madam Clerk, we'll vote on the two, and then we'll have to go into closed session for the third. So on COW 27 and COW 28, I will call the vote, all those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. On COW 34, there is a request to go into closed session by Counselor Kerr, is there a secondary? Counselor Nicholson. So, members of council, I'll call the vote in going into closed session on the confidential report from the Commissioner of Works. All, Madam Clerk, you okay?
Yep, just, no, it's fine, yes.
Okay. Okay, and the reason for going into closed session would be? For information explicitly supplied and confidence to the regional corporation by the City of Oshawa. Okay, that's the reason for going into closed session. Okay, on going into closed session, I'll call the vote, all those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, we will go to closed session. Madam Clerk, how much time do you need? Members of council, look, do you want a 10-minute recess? Okay, I guess we do, so, while we're getting set up, moved by Counselor Nicholson, seconded by Counselor Yamada, that we have a 10-minute recess, come back at 2:15. We'll call the vote, all those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, we're in recess to 2:15. Okay. Members of council, I'm going to call the meeting back to order, Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask for a roll call, please.
Okay, the vote's open now.
Okay, Madam Clerk? We have quorum. First on- We're back in open session. So we're voting on the staff recommendation of Cal. 34. Recorded vote was called by Counselor Nicholson. Counselor Anderson, it's a recorded vote. When I call it, if you're not in your seat, you're, you'll not, your vote will not be accepted, Members of Council. You need to understand that. Okay, Madam Clerk?
The vote's open.
Madam Clerk, can you read out the vote? Just so they know. It's all displayed. So, Members of Council, according to the rules, a tie is a loss. The Chair, I vote on every issue. It's not like the old days.
Staff recommendation to not fund has been defeated.
Has been defeated. So, Counselor Nicholson, first of all, we can't hear you, so hit the button.
So- What I was suggesting, Mr. Chair, given that the staff recommendation on 34 was defeated by Council, is it in order for myself or another member of Council to now move an alternate motion indicating that a region will cost share at 50-50 this bridge, expansion at 245 meters?
Okay, it's in order for you to move the motion. I think we're going down a path of not building a bridge, but you can move a bit.
Well, I'd like to move that, and hopefully subsequently, we'll go after CP to do their bridge too.
No, no, you have to state the motion, please. So, so you're moving?
That the region Durham co-fund the 45-meter width of the bridge at 50-50% with the city of Oshawa.
Okay, that is the motion. It needs a second. Seconded by Counselor Kerr. Okay, the item is on the floor. Mayor Foster?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just so I've got this accurately, the cork in the creek is the CP bridge?
Yes.
Okay. So spending this additional money for an asset that doesn't belong to Durham Region, Durham Region is now, cost sharing is not going to actually have any impact until CP fixes their bridge?
That is correct.
All right. This is not a regional asset. So if, if the CP bridge weren't there, we would be over-engineering an asset that belongs to Oshawa to further deal with possible flooding in the future?
Yes. Commissioner?
I heard Oshawa asset. This is a Metrolinks asset.
This is a Metrolinks asset?
Yeah.
Okay, pardon me, but, but we're stepping up. So, so for, for any asset, be it Metrolinks or municipal asset, moving forward, if we support this, should not every Council, and I don't know if this would be, I know we've got a debate over the bridge in Beaverton, whether it's a provincial bridge or not, should Durham Region not be stepping up each and every time if we're worried about this? And I would think it could be bridges, could be roadways, heck, maybe trails that are washed out?
Potentially.
Potentially?
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Nicholson, on the item?
I wasn't going to speak, but I think we get, we're getting confused on a couple of key points here, in my view. If we increase the width to 45, then we have the, may have made our investment, and Metrolinks as well, then we have leverage to go after CP to fix their bridge. And I think Counselor McDougal had it right on the head. If you don't do it at 45 now, and at some point in the future, CPR decides because of flooding or other issues that they are going to widen the bridge, are we going to go back and widen the one we didn't widen now? Does it not make sense to do the 45 now and then use as the template to put pressure on CPR to widen the bridge and remove the last cork in the bottle? If we choose not to, then we're actually having two corks left in the bottle, and this, keep in mind.
Counselor Nicholson, I'm going to ask just for a second. Mr. Hunt, should we be in closed session?
We are.
The, yes, we probably should still be in closed session because there's a third-party confidentiality that applies from Metrolinks, which is the, where this originally came from.
I don't believe anybody's actually given any details out about Metrolinks' dollar investment. We're just talking about whether the region should fund it or not.
So, as long as you're, you're members of council, Mr. Hunt, if we go down the path that you think we're crossing a line, would you please get my attention? Thank you. Please continue. Sorry for the interruption.
No, no, and I appreciate that. That's a fair point, Mr. Chair. I, I guess my concern, it's, it's no different than, for example, where MTO is doing the widening of the 401 highway, and they're widening the bridges at their cost. We're taking advantage of those widenings to allow us to expand the width of some of our regional roads in the area, because it would make no sense to tear up the area twice. While, while it's being widened, then we'll do our road the same way, and we just, we have a $9 million budget item, unfunded, I might add. We found the money to do that, because it made good sense to widen Wilson Road at the 401 while the 401 is widening their bridge. This is a very similar situation. Our experts in the field on flooding, the Central Lake Ontario Conservation Authority, who have mapped this entire area with an nth of degree, are recommending that we need to improve the flood flow in this area, and they support the Oshawa position of the 45 meter. They believe, in the long term, both the MetroLinks bridge and the CPR bridge should both be at 45 meters. But if we don't do the first one, our chances of ever getting the second one amended are be very rare. We would become the excuse that CPR would use, "Well, you didn't pay for your share of it. Why should we pay for any of it, for ours?" It is in the best interest of both the region, the city, Cloka, the residential communities and business communities, and CPR in the long run, that we open up the bridges along the CPR track and MetroLinks track, so that we have sufficient drainage of water from the northern portions of, all the way up to Brooklyn and beyond. To me, it's a prudent investment, especially, and I reiterate, within a couple of years of these bridges being open and the development starting, the region is going to recover not just its investment, but much, much more ad infinitum, decade after decade, development charges and taxes. So, you know, don't see this as an expenditure. See this as an investment in the future of Durham Region.
So, seeing no other hands, Commissioner Jagged Nothing, there are a number of other bridges on this creek. What is the width of the bridge at the next major intersection, which is the 401?
All I would say is they're all comparable. I don't have the exact dimensions. They're all typically designed to 100 years' term.
So, Bluer Street?
You just did it, brand new.
Wentworth Street?
Yeah, I would, I would say they're all comparable.
So, they're all 45?
No, I would, they're typically designed for 100 years' term, and in this case, if it's 32 meters, it's hard to say, because the railway bridge requirements are different than road bridges. Sorry, Chairman, I don't have, have the numbers. Like, if I may give one example, though, we had a similar situation, and I'll, I look at Jason Hunt to make sure I'm not saying anything about, I shouldn't. We had a similar situation in, in Whitby that council would recall about two, three years ago. Pringle Creek Bridge, it was a public report, where we, we had multiple scenarios of, about widening the opening under the bridge, so that like, you know, the lands to the east of the bridge on Brock Street can be developed. And that was a region asset. And even in that case, like, we only paid for our rehab component, and the developing landowner had to pay for any, any delta. In this case, you know, that's another consideration.
But, okay, I, I'm just concerned that if we put a wider bridge in, and the other bridges aren't as wide as the bridge that we're talking about, you're defeating the purpose. So, that would be the other bridges, is there's the bridge at the 401, so I'm going to assume it's fairly wide, but you've got Bluer Street and then Wentworth Street. And I'm not sure, I can't remember if there's any other bridges after that as you go down to the lake. Councilor Nicholson?
Just to assist you, the bridge at Bluer Street and at the 401 was just widened this spring.
Now, what about Wentworth?
I have to go back and look at, but it's, it's a very wide bridge. The wide, the, the bridge at Wentworth, not only is it a wide bridge, it's a high bridge. So, we're not talking about, you know, we're crossing 10 feet over the water. Wentworth Street is a good, I would say, just 40 to 50 feet over the water, going down the Osho Creek Valley, maybe even more. And Wentworth, it's a Bluer Street, again, it's a cut underneath, underneath the 401 and the bridge. It's, it's not down on the, on a flat land. Even the CPR bridge is not flat on the ground. It's not like crossing through a creek valley. It's, it's raised. And this new one, the MetroLinks putting, is going to be raised as well.
So, thank you.
So, it's, it's a capacity, but I repeat, repeat. Cloka says it's needed, and we don't have the technical ability to refute Cloka's argument.
Okay, members of council, recorded vote has been called on the item. Okay, Mayor Carter?
Sir, could we just see what the motion is on screen? It's not possible.
Give staff a minute, please. Yeah, pretty well. Delete "not." Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, it's, is it, basically, it's, it's remove the word "not" and just leave it as participate in the cost sharing, right? So, they're going to put it up? There it is. Okay, everyone's aware of what they're voting for? Okay, call the vote now. Recorded vote.
The vote's now open? Waiting on Councilor dies?
Okay, the vote, it carries 10-9, so that carries. Madam Clerk, quick question, because the letter that the mayor referenced in the open session, if you're in closed session, with my name in it, can I ask him to amend that letter in open session? But not for the public, because the letter's going to be public. Mayor Carter, can you make sure that the city of Oshawa addresses the error in the letter that was sent to the city and, and corrects it, please? Because my name's attached to it, and, okay. No, no, it'd be corrected. Thank you. Yeah. Madam Clerk, that is the business of the day. So, the last, last item on the list would be adjournment?
Yes.
So, looking for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilor Chapman, seconded by Councilor Mokahi. On adjournment, all those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Thank you very much.